Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the order of this meeting of the 23rd of March 2023, City of Nashville Planning Board. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mayor Donatus, Mike Peterson, Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Varley, Maggie Harper here. Patricia Cle.
Here.
Dan Hudson, Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Derek Tebow.
Here.
Okay, so we have a quorum, we're gonna move on with the agenda. First up on the agenda, we have minutes from the 9th of March 2023 Planning Board Meeting. Has anybody from the board had a chance to take a look at these minutes and wanna make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or need amendments? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the March 9th, 2023 Planning Board Meeting as written.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger to accept the March 9th minutes as written. Do we have a second?
No, second.
Second by Alderman Cle. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any extensions? No? Okay, that motion passes. Okay, Communications?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Quickly go over the items that you received after the packet was mailed out. You received a letter dated March 20th from Joe Mandola regarding engineering comments for 37 Will Street, as well as some additional comments from Earl Blatchford regarding that same project. Then for the asphalt plant, you received a memo from Tim Cummings, as well as an email from attorney Andy Pearlman, and an appraisal dated February 16th from the applicant. And we also sent out to you, we emailed you the butter notices, or comments and questions that we received up until yesterday at 4:00 PM. Anything received after that will be in your packet for April 6th. And that's all that we have for this evening.
Okay, thanks. Any reports of committees or liaisons?
Nothing to report.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ballinger?
Would like to mention, yes, I attended my first Nashville Regional Planning Commission meeting last week as a commissioner. Nothing to report back specifically to this board this evening, but those are going to be quarterly meetings, as I understand it. And if there's anything that I feel is worth passing on to the rest of the board, I'll certainly do so in the future, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next up, I'm gonna read the procedure of the meetings and hearings. So, the procedure's gonna be as follows. After each legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan or subdivision is read by myself. The board will first determine if the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, there'll be a public hearing, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. I'll next ask for testimony from the audience. I'll first ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan to speak. This is a time for you to come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and express any of your concerns or ask any of your questions regarding the plan. Following that, I'll ask for testimony from anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board will then ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant, and the applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they'll speak to any concerns raised by the prior public testimony. After this is completed, the public hearing will end, the board will resume a public meeting, at which time we'll deliberate and vote on the application before us. I'd ask that everyone keep their remarks to the subject at hand, not repeat what has already been said. The board wants to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented, and considering all the applicable approval criteria established in our Nashville Revised Ordinances for Conditional Special Use Permits, Site Plans, and Subdivision Plans. I'd ask for everyone's interest and courteous attention. If you do have a cellphone at this time, please put it on vibrate or turn it off. And just a reminder, we're not allowing signs to be lifted or waved or any of that kind of stuff in the audience. It's distracting to the board, and we wanna make efficient use of this meeting, so. Okay, so first up, old business conditional, you get special use permits, there are none. Next thing on the agenda that I'm gonna hear is a new business subdivision plan. This is case number A23-0015. This is Bronze Craft Corporation owner, Jeffrey Lynch, applicant. This is an application and acceptance of a proposed two-lot subdivision. His property is located at 37 Will Street. So for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and wanna make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Ballinger?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over a new business subdivision plan, case Property located at 37 Will Street.
All right, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction of A23-0015. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we have jurisdiction. Do we have someone from the applicant that wants to present this case?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Earl Blatchford. I'm with Hayner Swanson, here representing the applicant, Jeff Lynch. Just a brief overview of the application. The landowner is Bronze Craft Corporation. Purpose of the application is we're seeking to subdivide the existing lot at 37 Will Street into two lots. It's identified as map 87 Lot 220. The existing lot is 5.4 acres, located at the corners of Simon Street and Will Street, and Simon Street and Led Street in Ward 4. It's zone park industrial. All the butters on all sides are either industrial or commercial uses. Existing utilities in Simon Street, Led Street, and Will Street. There is municipal sewer, Penachuck water, natural gas, and overhead power and communications. The existing site, as I said, the address is 37 Will Street, contains an existing one-story industrial building, which is 40,000 square feet with a partial approximately 31,000 square foot basement. The site's been the home of Bronze Craft since practically 1987, when the original building was approved and built. There was an addition approved and added in 1999. There are curb cuts on both Will Street and Simon Street to access the site. Site has 148 car parking spaces, and a loading space off Simon Street. Existing building is serviced by the previously mentioned utilities, and there's no changes proposed to the existing site, no physical improvements proposed as part of this application. So the proposal is a subdivision of one lot into two. New Lot 220, which comprises and encompasses all of the existing site improvements, will be 3.726 acres, and will have open space remaining of 20.1% where 20% is required. New Lot 325, which is basically the newly created lot on the corner of Simon Street and Led Street, will be 1.674 acres, and will encompass the undeveloped portion of the site, and, which has frontage on both Simon and Led Street. You have a letter in your file, a drainage impact letter, which basically states because there's no proposed development, that there's no adverse impacts of stormwater from the site. We have submitted a stormwater inspection and maintenance plan to the owner's attorney, which will be submitted to be recorded, and that'll be for maintenance of the existing Bronze Craft site, basically stormwater measures, as required by the city. So that'll get recorded at the same time as the subdivision plan. The, as far as zoning goes, the existing lot and the proposed new lot, the two new lots, are both conform with current zoning requirements. We received technical review committee comments from zoning, from wastewater planning and engineering, and we have responded to all of those comments. Fire department had no comments to respond to. And we have two waiver requests before you. The first one is Section 190-212D1, requesting a waiver of construction sidewalks along the Led Street frontage of New Lot 325. And the reasons being, the, there is existing sidewalk along the entire Simon Street frontage. There is no sidewalk on either side of Led Street within 250 feet of the site, and the beginning of the Led Street hill exceeds 5%, which makes it difficult for, to construct sidewalks in the right of way. That would meet ADA requirements. So that's basically the crux. There's more information in the waiver letter, which I could get into if you wish, but that's the short version. And then the second is a request of Section 190-282B9, for, requesting a waiver of the existing conditions in topo within 1,000 feet of the site. We've submitted a 1,000-foot locust plan from the city's JIS database, which we've done in the past, and we're just following that same procedure. In closing, we think that everything with this proposal is conforming. As I said, we've addressed all comments received from staff. We think what we're proposing is responsible, and we seek approval for this application. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board or anyone in the audience may have.
Just regarding the comments from the senior staff engineer, public works, you've already received, reviewed all the latest ones and...
Yes, we received comments on Monday, the 20th. Responded back to Mr. Mandola on Tuesday, the 21st. It was pretty straightforward. There was one minor note revision on the plan, it's the only thing that affected the plan, and the other comments addressed verbally, so.
Okay.
I haven't heard back yet, but if there's any follow-up, we'll address it, but I think they're set with all the comments we've received to date.
Okay. Other questions by the board regarding this application? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This might be better directed towards staff, but regarding the sidewalk on Led Street, I understand the constraints with the grade, but was there any discussion of payment and lieu? Perhaps other areas of that part of the city may benefit from the sidewalk fund? I didn't know if that came up during the review process.
So this property is located in the Park Industrial Zone. The sidewalk contribution is for residential areas.
Strictly residential.
Correct.
Okay, very well. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions by the board for the applicant? Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
At this point, I'll open up to the public. Is there anybody in the audience here wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to this plan? Okay, I'm not hearing anybody. This is for Will Street, right? This is for Will Street. We're not, we don't have that in front of us yet, so, yeah. Okay? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this plan? Okay, any final questions by the board for this application? Anything else you wanna add before I close? Okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing on this application. Moving to the meeting. Seems like a pretty straightforward subdivision plan. I don't know if anybody has any discussion points for the, on the board? Nope? All right. I would be willing to entertain a motion. Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve new business, Project A23-0015 subdivision plan. Property located at 37 Will Street, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO, Section 190-138G, subject to six conditions. The first of which is a waiver request with respect to survey limits, which shall read, "is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation." Second condition is also a waiver request with respect to sidewalk, which shall read, "is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation." Stipulation 3 is written in the staff report. Stipulation 4, as written in the staff report, shall be amended to read a letter dated March 20th, 2023, and stipulations 5 through 6, as written in the staff report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ballinger. We have that motion to approve with the stipulations as stated. Do we have a second on that? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion by the board on this particular case? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Any abstentions? No? All right, that motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay. All right, next up, so just, obviously we have a full crowd here and significant interest in the, in the next case. I just want to give everybody an understanding of how this particular night, tonight, is gonna run. Essentially, you're gonna hear the board step through these, what are essentially four cases that are on the table right now. The board's gonna decide whether or not to take them off the table at this point. If we do take them off the table, it will result in the, in the start of a hearing. And during that hearing, the first thing that you're gonna see is gonna be the applicant presenting their case. There's revisions to this case, there's quite a bit more information that's been provided to the board since the last time we tabled it. The applicant's gonna be given time to present all of that information. The next step in that is gonna be the board asking questions of the applicant. Once we're done with that, I'm gonna open up to public comment and public testimony. For this evening, that's gonna be limited to two hours. That's gonna be the maximum. And at that point, I'm gonna recommend to the board that this application is tabled again. We won't actually go into a meeting tonight. There's likely several reasons for that, with that being that there's quite a bit of information that's been received today, we're anticipating more information being received by our next meeting on April 6th. So, you know, it's pretty likely that that's the process that this is gonna move to. It's possible and probably likely that there'll be another public hearing, or a public comment session on the 6th. That'll be up to the board, and I'll ask the board that. And likely, you know, subsequent to any of those discussions, and public comments, and additional presentations on the 6th, the applicant will then be given another rebuttal period at that point. So this is gonna likely go on for, you know, at least a couple more weeks, just so everybody knows that. I don't want people to be disappointed that they think they're gonna, you know, hear everything tonight. It's likely not gonna happen, so. But anyway, that's my prediction of, personally, of how things are gonna go, so I just want people to be aware of how that's gonna happen, so. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Alderman Cle?
Yes, thank you. At this time, I'm gonna recuse myself from this topic, and I'll go sit in the audience.
Okay, thank you very much. And then obviously, we have Alderman Tebow here to fill in and continue the quorum, so. All right, so for the board, first up, we have four cases, and I'm gonna read them, and then have you decide whether or not we're gonna take these off the table. So first up is Old Business Subdivision Plan, it's case number A21-0299. This is 145 Temple Street LLC owner, Greenridge LLC applicant, and this is a proposed three-lot subdivision for the property located at 145 to 149 Temple Street. Again, that was tabled from February 2nd, and I think, we can take these four together, right? Yeah, okay. And I'm gonna hear the motion to, whether or not to take off the table, in conjunction with Old Business Site Plan, case number A21-0300. Same owner and applicant, but a proposed site plan to show four bay garage office and storage. Case number A21-0301. It's the same owner and applicant. That's the proposed site plan to add asphalt manufacturing. And then Old Business Site Plan, A21-0302. Same owner, same applicant, and the site plan to add proposed office use. So for the board, is anybody...
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead, yep.
Application A21-0302 has been withdrawn by the applicant.
Okay. Correct, I forgot about that.
And I'd just like to take this moment to remind all board members to please speak loudly and clearly into your microphones.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so strike the A21-0302, but with respect to A21-0299, 0300, and 0301, is anybody from the board wanna make a motion as to whether to remove this from the table and reopen the hearing? Ms. Harper?
Aye, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to remove from the table Old Business Subdivision Plan, A21-0299, Old Business Site Plans, A21-0300, and A21-0301.
Okay, so we have that motion by Ms. Harper to remove these three items from the table and reopen the hearing. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just put this out as a, as a general question to my fellow board members. Given the lateness of some of the documentation that we received, to be honest with you, I wasn't entirely sure what we'd actually be discussing here tonight, whether we'd be hearing the case, or receiving testimony, or both. Is everybody comfortable moving forward this evening? And if we do have subsequent meetings, I would just like to remind everyone involved, this is a layboard. Folks do do other things during the day from between 9:00 and 5:00, and when we have a huge document drop a day, the day of the meeting, the day before the meeting, it's very difficult to get caught up and give proper attention to the materials that are received. So with that being said, I'd be comfortable voting on the motion, but I at least just wanted to say that, state that before the vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of these three items coming off the table and starting, restarting the hearing? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes, so we'll be, we have these items off the table. So at this point, again, I would open up to the applicant, and remind you, you know, we're looking for presentation of specifically all the new items that you have presented
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman. I'm an attorney with Prunier and Pearlman here in Nashville, here on behalf of the applicants, 145 Temple Street Limited Liability Company and Greenridge Limited Liability Company. With me tonight are the property owners, Rick DeFelice Senior and his son, Rick DeFelice Junior. And I'm introducing the team in the order that we're gonna be presenting. Also with us tonight is Richard Maynard, who's gonna walk us through the subdivision and the site plans. Laura Green, Dr. Laura Green is here, and she will be discussing her air dispersment testing, and also responding to the, the experts that you folks retained, the Sandburn Head Report. Jason Plord from VHB will be speaking to traffic, and then after, I have some introductory comments, and then I'll come back at the end with additional testimony for the board. Mr. Chairman, this application was before you on June 2nd and August 4th with my partner, Jerry Prunier, and it's been some time, and so, at the, at the risk of some repetition, we're gonna be, you know, re-presenting most of what you heard before, because I think it'd be helpful as the plan and project has developed. At the outset, Mr. Chairman, I do want to emphasize to the board that we have a permitted use with the proposed asphalt plant. We have a subdivision of one lot into two, not one lot into three anymore, and we have an office building for Newport Construction, it's a pretty straightforward subdivision. And then, you know, what everyone here is here for tonight is the asphalt plant. The asphalt plant is in allowed use under Land Use Code Number 177 in the General Industrial District, and, you know, notwithstanding all the information that's been coming out of the board, you know, that's, you know, just an important piece to keep in mind throughout. Newport Construction, the DeFelices moved onto the site in 2013. They sought out this site, in part because their long-term plans were to have an asphalt plant, and the asphalt plant is allowed in the General Industrial District, and they relied upon the zoning ordinance in acquiring this property, and they moved onto the site before there was a transit overlay district enacted. So, the ordinance was relied upon by the applicant, looking long-term at this site. The second opening comment, Mr. Chairman, I wanna state, is that we are here tonight, we are here today, obviously. But my point in that is that the, one of the criteria for site plan approval is that our, our proposal, the asphalt plant, has to, quote, "coexist and not significantly impact surrounding uses." And our surrounding uses, our surrounding uses are general industrial uses, all around us. We do have some apartments behind us, but I'll speak to that. And our surrounding uses, the ordinance does not speak to future surrounding uses, it speaks to the surrounding uses, you know, as of today. And if you look around, our uses, you have a plan up in, the area plan up in front of you, we have surrounding uses that are general, excuse me, general industrial. We have the inner-city materials right next to us. I'll speak more about that. We have, I know there was testimony before about the Henry Hanger Building, but the Henry Hanger Building today is an old vacant rundown mill. That's what it is today. That's our surrounding use. I know there's been permitting involved in that, but today, we're here tonight, the Henry Hanger Building is an old rundown vacant mill. So we have to work with our surrounding uses. Further to that point, some years ago, you folks approved a plan across Temple Street by a company, ZJBV Properties, for 168 units. It's still just a big parking lot, a contractor's yard. Again, our surrounding uses are general industrial. So, the ordinance speaks to where we are today, we're here tonight, we're not here. So the ordinance speaks to where we are today, we're here tonight, we're not here, you know, five years from now, ten years from now. Likewise, for the commuter rail, there's been a lot of talk of the commuter rail station. It's currently it's shut down by the Executive Council in Concord, and it's not there, it's not a surrounding use today. I say that because we feel like we're being judged by projects and properties that may or may not exist in the future. So again, preliminary comment, but it's important to keep that, keep that in mind. Mr. Ballinger, I hear you. Likewise, we've been, received a lot of information late in the game, but, you know, projects like this happens. We, we received, recently received the mayor's appraisal that you folks received as well by the BB and G Company, and, hang on. Excuse me. You know, I, I'm sure that'll be talked about, but I, I don't think this board should consider that appraisal at all, for two reasons. First, the New Hampshire Supreme Court has said on, in a number of cases that municipalities and planning boards have an affirmative obligation to assist applicants through the planning process. Affirmative obligation to assist, not to fight, not to impede, not to get in the way, but to assist. The thought that the city of Nashua is putting forth an appraisal to fight us, you know, contradicts the New Hampshire case law. And secondly, it calls into question whether or not the applicant can get a fair hearing where the mayor's appraisal is introduced to this board, because, don't forget, the mayor is a member of this board, and the mayor appoints board members. And where a board member brings his own appraisal to, for discussion, it, again, it calls into question whether or not an applicant can get a fair hearing. And finally, just as an introductory comment, again, don't forget the role the HES plays with the asphalt plant. DES has concurrent jurisdiction with you folks, you folks are looking at the subdivision and the site plan. DES administers the permitting for the asphalt plant, and there's a process there, there's a temporary permit, eighteen months, there's a testing involved, and whether or not the testing, the air quality testing complies, that they can either, the applicant can either go forward or not. So there's DES watching over this asphalt plant as well. So, Mr. Chairman, those are my introductory comments. I have some slides to present to you, if we can get them up on the, just to get to some of the character, character of the neighborhood and location where we are. Do you have those under?
Yes.
As I mentioned before, you can, you can see all around us, and I know you folks are familiar with this area, but again, we have the Newport Construction Building, we have the supply shop across the street, the Granite Group Supply, Plumbing Supply Store, we have the Corvo Ruthier Building right next to us, there's a longtime Corvo Ruthier, the inner-city materials, this and that, sand and gravel, and now in inner-city materials, been there for, for a long, long, long time, as long as I can remember. You have the Ripano Stoneworks Budget Rental Car. So you have a, a real, a general industrial district right in here. We do have some apartments and some homes behind us on Murray Court and Sheds Avenue, and I'll, I'll speak to those. But if we could move forward, Linda, please, to give you a sense of a couple pictures, then I'll turn it over, okay? Yep, keep going. This is the, this is the existing Newport Construction Site, and then just, let me make this one, one point, whether or not this asphalt plant is approved and built out, Newport Construction's not going anywhere. They, they bought this property, they're staying there, and they run a, you know, they're a construction company out of this site, and so it's not as if this asphalt plant doesn't get approved, this will miraculously turn into housing, it's not gonna happen. This is a Newport Construction Site, you know, for the, for the, for the long term. And then the next few are just, just to get a sense of, you know, the area and what you want, what folks look at every day. You have the old rail line, there's the, on the left in this picture, there is the, what an old gasoline station, a service station. This is one of the buildings that is of the Newport Construction on the right in this picture, that is proposed to be taken down and turned into parking for the, for the asphalt plant. And then the next two pictures, this is from our site, from Newport Construction's site by their, by their garage, their service garage, looking south toward inner-city materials, and this is what we look at every day from our site. And this is a materials yard that, you know, has all the components that you expect from a, you know, heavy materials, moving dirt, moving stone, and other product. And on the next slide, this is, this is, I wanna, I wanna stop here for a minute because I want the board to see, you know, what, what we see and what others see. This is what you see looking at beyond the fence in this picture is inner-city materials, yard and buildings, and it's important that you see the, the height of this building because when I, I took a ride, and when you're, when you stand on Sheds Avenue, which is a cross-commercial, the inner-city material building and the Newport Construction Building block the views easterly, they block the views where the asphalt plant is proposed. And even though the Shed Avenue is elevated, it's higher up off of a, of a commercial because you have that big stone wall, even with the elevation change, these buildings are blocking the view shed toward where the asphalt plant is proposed. And that's for Shed Avenue, and that's for Gorman Avenue, a small little street heading onto Temple, and Murray Court has, I think, two apartment buildings, maybe three, and same type of thing, the, the Newport Construction Building blocks the view where the asphalt plant is going to be going on this site. And the next, the next slide is more of our view shed looking around, again, this is inner-city material, and you can see the Henry Hanger Building toward the back of this picture, and then, let me just keep going, just showing the, just showing the area. This next slide shows the back of what was the Corvo, Courier Ruthier Building, which as far as we know is, is staying put, but that's, again, the, the nature of this general industrial district that we're in. And the next slide has us looking across Temple Street, that's the back of the Granite Group Plumbing Supply Building, and just the, the fencing and the, beginning at the top of the slope down to the Nashua River. And then the next slide, again, we have the parking lot, this, this is where the hundred and sixty-eight units were approved, I think in two thousand nineteen, and there they are missing, because that's the, just a contractor's yard, and it's also acting for a tree service area. So we are really surrounded today, our surrounding uses today are general industrial, and then the last one that I have before I turn this over to Mr. DeFelice is, is at the end of the Corvo Ruthier Parking Lot is now turned into a contractor's yard, a storage, a debris storage yard, and then you have the, the Henry Hanger Building in the background. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask Mr. DeFelice come up and talk about how an asphalt plant works, what goes on at the site, how trucks come and go, and just describe their general operations, and with the, with the, with the next slide. And then, again, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Maynard's gonna talk, Ms. Green, Mr. Plord, and then I have some comments to wrap up. The board have any questions for me at the moment?
No, I think we'll kinda move through the presentations and then, if the board's good with that, and then, you know, kinda circle back on the questions.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you for taking the time tonight, appreciate it. So basically, I'd like to touch on, you know, how you make asphalt, the tuminous concrete, right? So I think, you know, I'm sure you probably all have looked into what tuminous concrete is and how it's made. Essentially, high-level view of that is you have coarse aggregate stone, sand, and essentially they get fed into a drum, the drum mixer, and they get heated, they get heated to about three hundred and twenty-five, three hundred and ten, three hundred and twenty-five degrees. And if you use a warm mix additive, it would be about two hundred and seventy-five degrees.
Excuse me, Mr. DeFelice, could you speak up or bring the microphone on?
Sure, just bring it up, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, how about if I just hold it?
That's fine.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Better? Good, great. Is that good? Everyone can hear? Awesome, thank you. All right, so, in any event, okay, we're good? We're good, all right, thank you. So basically, the stone, the sand gets entered into the drum. The drum is a, it's a mixing apparatus, and that's heated through a natural gas burner to a temperature of three hundred and twenty-five degrees, and if you do use a warm mix additive, it could be as low as two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy-five degrees. So what happens is, on a counterflow drum, if you notice, it's at an angle, the material heats itself, and it, and it, it walks its way down the drum, and then about halfway through, you have an induction of the wrap, which is a recycled asphalt pavement, that gets introduced, it gets introduced halfway through, gets heated with the stone, and on the tail end of the drum, it becomes impregnated with the liquid asphalt. Once it is fully mixed, it enters onto the drag slot conveyor, so if you see the ladder apparatus going up, that's a drag slot conveyor. What happens is, that material will head up to the top of the silos, and then it will get dropped into the silo, depending on which number. In this case, we have three silos, depending on what the material is, if one's failed, it'll go to the next, et cetera. So I, I, I wanted to bring this up to be very clear. An asphalt plant is not a major, you know, magical plant where, you know, there's a lot of unknown here. It's a mixing drum that's heated by natural gas, there's a flame that's by, you know, heated by natural gas. It does mix the liquid asphalt, it creates the tuminous concrete or asphalt as we know it, and it gets entered into the silos. Once it's entered into the silos, do we have, did we have the flow chart? I don't think we did, on the trucks, no, on the main plan, okay. Essentially, what would happen, what does happen, actually, the silos are full, so now we'll go to the, to the trucks and how they get loaded. So what'll happen in this case, we don't have the plan up, but you have Temple Street, you're gonna have the trucks entering into, from Temple Street, and they're gonna enter in, and they're basically gonna enter into the, what we'll call the loadout building. So if you see the three silos, in this situation, in my plan in Westford, we have the, I believe it's the only one in Massachusetts, which, it's a loadout building. What happens is, trucks will enter, and then there's an eye. That eye will then, once the truck is about twelve feet away from the entrance, the door, much like a car wash, much like a car wash, will go up. Truck will enter, and then once the truck enters, door comes down, okay? When the door comes down, truck pulls under the silo, and then the silo will, you know, the plant operator will empty the silo into the truck. Now, when that happens, any emissions steam in this situation, because we have the loadout building, are captured by ventilation system. And in this loadout building, there's two what we call baghouses, and those emissions get entered into the baghouse and through a filter, okay? Once the truck's loaded, there's probably a ten or twelve second delay, and then, and we do that, maybe fifteen seconds depending, to make sure that all those vapors and et cetera, the emissions get, you know, sucked through the ventilation system into the baghouse. When that's done, green light will go on, door will go up, truck will exit. When the truck exits, it'll put its top down, or on the load, it'll pull up, in this case, probably forty feet away from the loadout building, and it will, the driver would get out, and there'll be a ticket booth, he'll get his ticket, he'll sign it, and he sends the ticket back up, and then in this case, he'll exit the property, you know, through the property and onto Commercial Street, in this case. So again, not to overcomplicate things, I'm sure there'll be enough of that going on, but high-level view, that's kind of what, you know, what we're dealing with here. Happy to answer questions if you have them right now, if not, happy to answer when, you know, we'll get this process going, whatever you wanna do.
Can you just briefly explain the difference between this drum system and the previous hitter, the batch?
The batch?
That was, we saw initially, just, just briefly.
Sure. So the drum plant, you know, it's a counterflow drum, right? So the batch, if you had a batch plant, you'd have two pieces of equipment, you would have a drum dryer that would heat the stone, which would feed the fifty-foot-high batch plant. And then what happens is, there's components with a different-sized stone, and the computer would call for different stone to make whatever you wanted to make. So the batch is a situation where you can make as little as you want, or you could, you could make, you know, the four ton per minute, or however, you know, you wanted to. You could make as little as a half a ton or a ton. In Westford, we have the drum mix plant. So after the first couple of meetings and the, you know, listening to things, I said, you know, I think I'm just gonna go to the drum mix. That's what we do, it would be one less piece of equipment, you know, the forty-five-foot tower no longer exists, you know, just for a lot of reason, that, that had a lot to do with it. The other thing is that we're already in the drum mix mode, we, we have them, you know, ease of use, you know, familiarity, the whole, you know, and parts. So that's kind of the difference between the two. So we, basically, we, we negated the forty-five-foot batch tower, and, and that's, that's really what, you know, what we're doing today. The difference in why originally I wanted to go with a batch was because you can make as little as a half a ton or a ton. In this case, you know, we, we, we're gonna put our mix up in the silos, and it was more for the winter business, where you could only make one or two ton if needed. In this case, we'll make our mix, we'll keep it in the silo, and we'll, we'll do it that way.
All right, thanks. Any other questions for this applicant right now? Ms. Harper?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just regarding the, I think you call them baghouses, the filtration system.
Yes.
Is this designed specifically for asphalt plant, or is this used for other, other type of industries?
Yep, to the best of my knowledge, these are specifically designed for asphalt plants. The baghouses, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are you able to, to talk perhaps high-level about what, what state permits or other federal permits that you may need in order to operate this facility?
Absolutely, sure, yep. So we've already filed for our New Hampshire DES permit, and that's pretty much the permit that governs asphalt plants in the state of New Hampshire. Yep, and we have filed for that, and, yes, so that's, that is what it is, yep.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is, is the permit issued by DES, is that a one-time permit, or is there a monitoring requirement, yearly, quarterly?
Yep.
Some subsequent?
Yep, so what happens is, you get a temporary-
Is, is the permit issued by DES, is that a one-time permit, or is there a monitoring requirement, yearly, quarterly?
Yep.
Some subsequent?
Yep. So what happens is, you get a temporary permit. If we're blessed and we, and we get the application and we're good to go, we will, we would have an 18-month, 18-month period, build the plant, get it up and running. The DES comes in, we have to meet certain criteria, we meet that, we get a five-year permit. It's good for five years, and then it reoccurs every five years, where you have to do your testing of all your air quality and all those sort of things.
I guess one more, just a quick follow-up, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
That, that five-year milestone, are you doing testing in those intermediary time periods, or is it just like, oh, we're at year five, we should test now?
Yep.
Or are there subsequent iterative steps?
Yep. So, yep, so I can speak to Massachusetts every three years. We have to do a stack test, and, and, you know, we adhere to all the rules and regs. I, I don't believe there's any testing required in the state of New Hampshire, and I could be wrong with that, I let someone else speak to that, knows it better, but I believe it's every five years. Yep, but, but with that being said, routine and good maintenance of your, of your equipment is you're consistent, constantly changing bags in the baghouse and different things to make sure that, you know, everything is what it's supposed to be. And if everything is what it's supposed to be, and I got my permit, then it should, it should maintain itself. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. D., please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Thurst?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. D., please, how many trucks a day will be going in and going out of that facility?
Well, if I knew that, if I knew the exact answer?
I understand that.
Right.
But what, in a rate?
What are we thinking? So, you know, we're thinking probably 150 in, 150 out, you know, could go to, you know, 200 in, 200 out, but, you know, this is over an eight to 10 hour period, more like an eight-hour period.
Right.
Yeah. So you're looking at, you know, I mean, it's hard to say, I, I...
But anywhere from 300 to 500 trips a day, basically?
I'd say, yeah, I'd say, you could say 300 to 500. I, I think that's maybe a little aggressive on that amount. You know, I think the three is realistic. You know, could it be 100 a day? It's, it's hard to say.
Would this facility operate all year round, or will it just operate during the construction season?
So you, your construction season, full operation, you're probably eight and a half months, and then the winter months, you're probably cut down to about 10% of what the norm is during the regular construction season? Yeah, I would like to keep it going to 12 months, but the winter, obviously, is the winter, right? And you're not doing that much business in the wintertime. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. D., please?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, whoever.
Good. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, next up, we have Richard Maynard.
Yeah, you might have to just hold it. Unless you can twist it up, yeah.
And to walk us through the subdivision and site plans.
Okay.
Good evening, folks. For the record, my name is Richard Maynard, a professional engineer with Maynard Parkhead of Nashville. The property of concern is located at 145-149 Temple Street. Are we gonna put my plan on? The property of concern is located at 145-149 Temple Street, generally known as the Shaglin-Leber Company site for decades, now owned and occupied by Newport Construction.
Coming. We have a copy here.
Liddy, you're okay? There, what? Put my plan up?
Coming.
Anyway.
There we go.
Thank you. The property contains 177,756 square feet. It was originally proposed to be subdivided into three lots, but this has been revised to be a subdivision of two lots, a 74,567 square foot lot with the existing 23,920 square foot building to be utilized by Newport Construction for their business. It includes 45 parking spaces, offices for base for vehicle maintenance and repair, and 7,200 square feet of storage. The other lot to the east, or the left on your plan, would be the roughly 103,000 square feet size and contain the asphalt manufacturing facility, which you see in the middle of the triangular shape there. Several existing buildings on the site would be, would be razed to open up the site. This lot and the Newport Construction lot would share a common entrance off of Temple Street and also an entrance along the suddenly popular line to Commercial Street. Budding this property area is a property formerly occupied by Red A-Mix Concrete Corporation, now occupied by a company called Inner City Materials, which is a sand gravel and loan operation delivering materials year-round to the various cities. They have, Attorney Prohmann showed you several pictures of their site. They, they have quite a bit of operation over there, and that's immediately to the upper right on the, on that screen. 103,000 square foot lot to the southeast is proposed to become the asphalt manufacturing facility. To itself is the B&amp;M Railroad right-of-way, which will become eventually the natural rail trail someday in the future, probably several decades from now. The asphalt plant lot at 147 Temple Street, also known as Lot 98, would have some 45 parking spaces plus the asphalt manufacturing facility. The lot would be entered from Temple Street and exited through the travelway easement to Commercial Street and then to East Hall Street. Range for those two lots is handled by three sets of leach and catch basins that have been successfully servicing the property for several decades. The leach and catch basins are cleaned out at least once accurately, and my recent observations is that they're working as they're intended. Traffic to the asphalt plant is anticipated to enter in off of Temple Street. The queue line to the plant has accommodated, can accommodate 14 trucks. The asphalt plant is anticipated to service 15 to 20 trucks per hour. Trucks in excess of that would be directed to the 45 spaces in the area to the left or east of the asphalt plant, or to the area west of the asphalt plant labeled overflow and backup parking. There will be a traffic person, yard man on-site at all times during the asphalt plant, asphalt asphalt plant operation to ensure that the trucks do not back up into the Temple Street entrance interfering with Temple Street traffic. The perimeter of the asphalt facility will be screened by an eight-foot chain link fence with slats. This includes the B&amp;M Railroad Yard property line and the Temple Street property line for both lots. The properties have been zoned general industrial for many, many decades, and just recently, the TOD zone was added to encourage residential development and commuters to Boston from a Crown Street rail station. Right now, the commuter rail station is in limbo and may, may never happen. The asphalt plant is in allowed use by right in this GI zone. Thank you.
Okay. For the board, any questions for Mr. Maynard at this, at this point?
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
All right, thanks. Mr. Prohmann?
Mr. Chairman, as, as I mentioned, we have, we will have updated plans for you for the next hearing because we removed the lot that's right along the railroad track. That's, so, Richard will have updated subdivision and site plans for us, for the, for your next hearing. Next up, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Laura Green is to speak to her, air dispersion testing, as well as speaking to the back and forth with Sanborn Head, the folks you hired to take a look at this.
Okay, thanks. Might need to pull the mic down there a little bit. Hey, you can just grab it if you want, yeah.
I'll just hold it, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you for the honor to speak with you this evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I don't have any slides, so I'll just talk to you. I'm a chemist and a board-certified toxicologist, and for every project that I work on, whether it's for a state government, the federal government, or a private entity, I do pretty much the same thing. I try very hard to make certain that the proposal will protect public health. The way that we do that with regard to emissions to air, and whether it's a highway project or an asphalt production project, pretty much anything that emits anything to air, we adhere by standards and guidelines that have been developed over more than five decades now. Some of you are old enough to remember that before 1970, we did not have United States Environmental Protection Agency. People could pretty much do what they wanted. Starting in 1970, the United States Congress passed the Clean Air Act. We established the United States Environmental Protection Agency. That Clean Air Act is our guide. It was passed in 1970. It was amended substantially in 1977, and then again in 1990. And then, of course, at the state level, we now have what we didn't have decades ago, which are scientists and toxicologists like me working to determine what level of emissions to air are safe and what levels are unsafe. So the same sort of process that engineers and scientists undergo at the federal level and at the state level is what I did when I was evaluating this project. And actually, to the question of what the New Hampshire DES requires, I actually went above and beyond that, because although this is a minor source of emissions, according to the DES, they have sort of two categories. A major source would be a power plant, for example, but decades of data have shown that if all you're doing is making hot mixed asphalt, in their mind, that's a minor source. So they don't actually require a lot of modeling, but I ignored that and went above and beyond it because I think it's really important for the community to know whether a facility that's proposed for their neighborhood is or isn't gonna adversely affect their health. So what I did is apply what it, what's called a computerized air dispersion model. It essentially predicts what impact the emissions will have at any given point. So what you do in your model is set up, they're called receptors, but they're essentially points on a map. And in this neighborhood in particular, because some of the homes are at the second, third, fourth story, and because someday, maybe, the hangar building might become homes, I didn't just place receptors on the ground. I made certain that if someone were living on a second story, a third story, or fourth story apartment or townhouse, even at the closest residences, that their air quality would not be adversely affected. And when you do this sort of model, there's only two possibilities. Either the impacts are too high, let's say there's too much sulfur dioxide, for example. Well, then what you do is you go back to the, the people planning the facility and say, this isn't gonna work. You have to either scale back your proposed production, you have to, you know, do something, add additional air pollution controls. It's very, very important that every single air quality standard set at the federal government level and every single air quality guideline set at both the federal and state level are met. Because if they aren't met, then regardless of whether it's a by right use or not legally, it's not appropriate for public health. So when we ran that model, we found that in fact, the proposal does meet all of the air quality guidelines and standards, not only the enforceable standards, but just the guidelines, many more guidelines. So for example, Dr. Stephen Zemba, the environmental scientist and engineer who's working for you all, he mentioned in one of his commentaries that he was particularly interested in two pollutants, formaldehyde and benzene, and he and his colleagues wanted to make very certain that the impacts from those two pollutants would be sufficiently small. So we made certain that that was the case, and in fact, the impacts for those two pollutants are very small fractions of the health-based guidelines. I want to mention also, I, I, like you, didn't have much of a chance to read the comments, but I did see that comments came in mentioning what we know to be true, which is not everybody in the area has perfect health. Some of us have heart conditions, some of us have breathing conditions, some of us are senior citizens, some of us are otherwise vulnerable. And I think it's very, very important to appreciate that when the toxicologists at the United States Environmental Protection Agency and at the New Hampshire DES, when they set standards and guidelines, they have those people in mind. It is the vulnerable people for whom the standards are set. It's not otherwise perfectly healthy young people. It is vulnerable people. So for example, people who have heart disease are the kind of people that toxicologists like me have in mind when we look to set health protective standards for pollutant-like carbon monoxide, which comes out of all of our tailpipes, for example, if we drive gasoline or diesel cars or trucks. Similarly, if any of us have asthma, some of us may be sensitive to a pollutant called sulfur dioxide. So again, when we're looking at a standard for sulfur dioxide, it's not the standard to protect healthy people. It's the standard to protect the subset of asthmatics who may be sensitive to sulfur dioxide. So the whole point of doing this exercise, and especially for, for a facility that hasn't been built yet, right? We don't have any data yet. There's no exhaust stack, so we can't measure it yet. But starting about 25 years ago, for several million dollars, tax dollars actually, the United States Environmental Protection Agency and their contractors went to operating hot mixed asphalt plants and took extensive measurements. They took measurements of facilities that were burning natural gas for the fuel. They took measurements of facilities that were burning fuel oil. They looked at facilities that were not controlled by baghouses, and then facilities that were controlled by baghouses. So although we don't have data yet from a proposed facility by definition that hasn't been built, we do have literally decades worth of data on similar facilities, and those data we use in order to make our predictions. And as I said, in this case, the predictions are that public health would be protected, not only for people walking or jogging or biking, but people in apartment buildings that exist now on the second or third story, and people who might be in an apartment building in the future if the hangar building or something similar ever became residential. So although I appreciate the legal point about, you know, there's no hangar building residences now, I want you to know that when I look at a facility like this, I imagine that everyone could, that someone could live right beyond the fence line, and that that someone could have asthma or heart disease or another condition that would make him or her vulnerable to too much air pollution. So that's what I did, and that's what I found, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, thanks. I just have a couple of quick questions, pass around to the board. With regard to the sort of measurement of sort of contaminant concentrations in the air and things like that, can you explain the relationship between those and like the perceptibility of odor? You know, because I'm, I'm wondering, I guess, you know, can something be within the guideline of not toxic, but still be perceptible?
Yeah. That's an excellent question. Yeah. There, first, yes. There are things that you can smell that don't harm you, and there are things that do harm you that you can't smell. Right? I mean, you all run a landfill in this city, so you're very familiar with odors that are sometimes problematic from landfill gas. Those odors, for example, are sulfur-based compounds, and they're, those sulfur-based compounds tend to smell, but they're not very toxic. Now, with regard to hot mixed asphalt, it is true that there's a characteristic smell which we're all familiar with if we've ever been around a paving site, right? It turns out that because there are a couple thousand hot mixed asphalt plants in the country, and I don't know how many more thousands worldwide, people have been working for a long time on agents that you can add to the... for a long time on agents that you can add to the asphalt, the liquid asphalt, to dampen those odors and to in fact, counteract them. And it turns out that probably the best product that anyone's come out, up with, is something cleverly called Descent. And it turns out that if you add a little bit of Descent, I don't know, it's maybe a half an ounce per, I don't know how much, it does mask that odor. And it's an important thing to consider, especially when a hot mixed asphalt plant or loading of hot mixed asphalt might be, you know, in someone's neighborhood. I will mention, I think it's probably the case that the asphalt odors that you would get driving by a paving site, or walking or jogging or biking by a paving site, are going to be a lot more noticeable. Because first of all, when you're applying asphalt, right, what you're doing is spreading it out and then letting it come to ambient temperature, and the vapors are coming off. Well, when you're making hot mixed asphalt and you're storing it in silos, you're not spreading it out, right? You don't want it to spread out and cool and harden, right? You've got to keep it hot and contained. And so, in fact, when you think about it, not only is it important to add this deodorizing agent to the asphalt cement, but to the extent that there's going to be odors, it's going to be where the paving is actually happening. It's not going to be where the asphalt's produced, because there, it's hot and contained, and when you pour it into a truck, you don't want it to cool either. So you've got to tarp the thing, right?
Yeah, okay. Your latter point was in my sort of second question was whether or not the dispersion model accounts for the truck off-gassing.
Do you mean the tailpipe emissions, or do you mean, I'm not sure what you mean exactly?
Just the mix that is off-gassing in the truck.
Yes, so the truck is not going to leave the site unless it's tarped, both because I believe there's going to be a man or woman there whose job it is to make sure that that doesn't happen. And also frankly, you've got to be kind of an idiot not to tarp your truck, because, you know, it's going to cool, it might harden, by the time you get to the job site, it's no good. So, you know, that's not really an issue. I did not, I did not include in my model impacts from the tailpipes of the trucks. I got to tell you, it's never done for a facility that is, I mean, I know 200 or 300 trucks sounds like a lot, but relative to the kind of traffic we've got around us, no one ever models that because everybody knows that it's, it's not a significant increment. It could be done. I've never seen it done on a small project. I've seen it only done on major highway projects. I've, I've never seen anyone do it for any, any project that's, I know it doesn't seem small, but for any project that's this small. I will say also, I assume in New Hampshire, just like in Massachusetts, which is where I live, the trucks are, you know, tested for their emissions and are not allowed to be operating on the roads if they're not in compliance with the emission standards.
Okay. And then regarding particulate emissions, your model looked at particulates?
Yes.
And then, does that account for sort of loading of aggregate to the plant from the trucks?
Yeah, very good question. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so not only, I mean, there are lots of different things that went into our model. There's the main exhaust stack, there's the exhaust from what's called the hot oil heater, there's a little bit of exhaust from the silos, but there's condensers. But yes, there are, there's going to be sand and stone, and there're going to be certain emissions associated with using those materials. And yes, I took all that into account. It's very important to take that into account. Also, as you may know, there are very small aerosols that come off of anything that burns anything, whether it's your home heating furnace or the combustion of natural gas in all circumstances. Those little aerosols are also a kind of particle. So yes, I accounted for the aerosols and for the little microscopic dust associated with sand and gravel and that sort of thing.
Okay, thanks. Other questions by the board for Ms. Harper?
I'm just curious, how many other plans, or how many years' worth of data were used to come up with this evaluation?
Yeah, good question. So as I think I mentioned, in the late 1990s, early 2000s, I think 1999, 2000 timeframe, US EPA spent about $2 million testing facilities. Both before then and after then, lots of data have accumulated from facilities that are of this design, a drum mix plant that will burn natural gas, or if for whatever reason the natural gas supply is interrupted, a backup fuel. So there are, at this point, scores of data sets. They don't all come from New England, of course. North Carolina is actually a state that has a lot of data, and so I've used data from there. It's all compiled in something called Air Pollution Volume 42, or AP 42. And so when people like me go to make predictions about a facility that hasn't been built yet, we go to that compendium and look in that compendium for similar facilities, meaning a design that's a drum mix versus a batch mix, and the fuel. And I did the modeling, both assuming natural gas only and assuming fuel oil only. So there's at this point, quite a lot of data. And I should say also frankly, it's, it's not very new technology, right? I mean, people have been making asphalt for a long time, and although the pollution controls have gotten better, the basic idea of heating up rock to drive off the moisture and then gluing it together with some asphalt cement, it's been going on for a long time. So I'm quite confident that the data set that I rely on is reliable. I should say also, we build in some worst-case aspects of this. When you do this kind of thing, what you do is you take five years' worth of data from meteorologic stations, so wind speed, wind direction, cloud cover, which dictates basically how much or little dispersion you're going to get in the atmosphere. We take five years' worth of data, and we pick out the worst-case hour in five years when we're interested in an hourly standard, an hourly guideline. And we pick out the worst 24 hours when we're looking at a guideline that's good for a full day. And we pick out the worst-case year of five years when we're looking for long-term averages. And we focus on the worst-case point. So one of the commenters I noticed, mentioned, actually several, mentioned that there's an elementary school about a half mile or so, as the crow flies, actually a little closer. That elementary school is much too far away to be nearly as impacted as the closest apartment. So at a facility like this, both because of dust from sand and gravel, and because it's not a big power plant with a huge exhaust stack, right? It's a relatively small facility, as these things go. So the impacts at the fence line are actually the highest impact. So that's why I'm focused on apartments that are right there, whether they exist now or they might exist in the future. As you go further out, the impacts, of course, get proportionally much smaller, and there's only one worst-case hour over five years, et cetera. So there's a lot of things we do in this to really try to make it worst-case, because, you know, it's important, right?
Thank you.
Sure.
So I assume you're not an asphalt plant designer, but in your own opinion, having evaluated, I assume you've evaluated several of these plants, and the pollution prevention measures, bag house, other things, condensers on the silos, what have you, that are being proposed, is that typical of what you see? Are there enhanced measures that you've evaluated before that would improve the results? I mean, obviously, I can only expect you to comment on what you've seen and personally evaluated, but...
Yeah. Well, I'm not a pollution engineer. I can only tell you a couple things that I know, but Dr. Steve Zemba, who's working for you guys, is actually the better person to ask. In my experience, the tightest regulated plants in the United States are in California. And the kind of containment of the load-out area, right, which is when the asphalt product, you know, is dumped into a truck, but, you know, there's some air around, right? The load-out area enclosment, enclosure, rather, that is being proposed here, you see in California, you don't see in too many other places. So, you know, in my experience, what's being proposed is, you know, I don't like to use the phrase "state-of-the-art" because that may change in five years, but I don't know, I don't know of any facilities that are as tightly controlled as the ones in California. And as far as I can tell, what's being proposed here is essentially a California-level control. But again, Dr. Zemba probably knows more than I do on that point.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for the toxicologist, anybody here on the board? Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah? Mr. Pearlman?
Mr. Chairman, there's been a lot of discussion about traffic. Jason Lord from VHB, who you folks know, is here to address the traffic patterns. We've been, and we've been working with Wayne Husband. He issued a long memo after a number of staff meetings, and Jason can speak to that as well, and what we're going to be doing for the area.
Okay, just two seconds here. I'm just going to, anybody from the board need five minutes or anything? Okay, good. All right, go for it.
Good evening. My name is Jason Lord. I'm a professional engineer, traffic engineering consultant on the development, and I work with VHB.
Make sure you pull that mic down, because...
Sorry, apologize.
Yeah, or pull it right out, because it doesn't work as well too far away.
Is this better, or should I take it out?
Probably just take it out.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
All right.
Yeah.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you. Linda, would you mind calling up that presentation again? Thank you. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to walk everybody through the process that we've gone through as far as evaluating the traffic impacts of the development. And as you'll see on the screen in a couple minutes here... I think that's where we all want to be right now, isn't it? Was that a home picture, Linda? I'm jealous.
Yeah, I have to go.
All right, can you go to the next slide?
Keep going.
Keep going, please. That's it. Go back one. Thank you. I appreciate it, Linda, thank you. So in the early stages of this development, from a traffic perspective, as any traffic engineer would like to do, is to understand the development program. And what we do is we generate site trips based on different standard traffic engineering practice, one of which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers, abbreviated as I T E. So that's the I T E Trip Generation Manual. And what that does is that helps us understand the volume of traffic that would be generated by a development. What it also does is it helps to be able to set the scope of study, whether that's by the applicant, or the municipality, or by the state, depending on who the agency is. And the city actually has some specific guidelines. So it's not just me putting together information and saying, here you go, folks. It was really based on the city's guidelines for the preparation of traffic impact reports and traffic management plans. There are certain thresholds based on the estimated volume of traffic, based on the adjacent roadway peak hour, so that is generally the highest time period during the weekday commuting time periods. So that's in the morning between seven and nine, again, the highest hour. And then in the afternoon, when people are coming home from work, between four and six. The development peak hour could occur outside of those commuting time periods, and the city has a different threshold for that time period. So for example, if you have some kind of a facility that might be generating a lot of traffic during the lunchtime, you know, that's kind of a similar situation where you would be looking at that 100 vehicle per hour threshold. Then there's also the daily, the weekday daily threshold. And, you know, going through them, it's 75 for the commuting time periods, it's 100 vehicles per hour during the peak hour of the generator, and then it's 1,200 vehicles per day on a daily basis. And the development, so we submitted that information to Mr. Husband back in April of last year, and, and so he evaluated that information. Now, if we triggered any of those thresholds, then we would have to do a full traffic study and evaluate the impacts of that development. What we also did was we took a look at the I T E in New Hampshire DOT's guidelines of when a development may have a noticeable impact at an intersection. And that is when you generate traffic that would increase by 100 vehicles per hour through an intersection, not on an approach, not on a movement, but through the intersection. So that would be like exiting and entering traffic. So that was the combination of all that traffic. And again, we don't trigger that threshold, which is similar to the peak hour of the development, of the 100 vehicles per hour. Linda, could you go to the next slide, please? So accordingly, Mr. Husband reviewed that information, and as part of the city's guidelines, even if we didn't hit those thresholds, that doesn't mean the traffic evaluation is done. Mr. Husband still has that opportunity to request more information, and accordingly he did, and rightfully so. He wanted to understand better the operations of the development, especially since right now, there's full access on Temple Street for this development. There is a curb cut on Commercial Street that's currently gated. And as part of this development, we're proposing to change the circulation to a one-way flow. Vehicles would enter off of Temple Street, circulate through the site, and then exit onto Commercial Street. So Mr. Husband asked us to provide some information with respect to that, and we provided that accordingly, as you're going through the timelines that are on the screen. So then Mr. Husband reviewed that information, and he provided an email correspondence that there is sufficient capacity available in the study area to accommodate the increased traffic. And then he asked for a financial contribution based on the vehicles per hour times a certain dollar figure to be provided for future traffic mitigation measures. And that's a common practice with different municipalities, and especially within the city of Nashua. So we have no objection to any of that information. So we got that info, that email correspondence from Mr. Husband on June 1st. The next evening, we were here before this board on June 2nd, and as Mr. Hudson, who was sitting on the board, the city engineer, stated that the proposed development would add traffic, but, add truck traffic, I'm sorry, but the estimated volume of site trips is low, and there are no concerns with capacity along Temple Street and Commercial Street. I double-checked that to make sure I wasn't missing anything, and I re-watched the meeting on demand through the city's website to make sure that I was not missing anything on that. Linda, could you go to the next screen, please? Thank you. So then Mr. Husband provided a separate memo in December. So we hadn't heard anything, you know, since our hearing that we had in June on, at least from Mr. Husband. And then we received a memo from Mr. Husband on December 12th, right before the holidays. And he said that he had received some input from planning board members and, and from the public that required further evaluation. Not a problem. You know, we want to make sure that we're providing the city with enough information where, as you mentioned earlier, Mr. Chair, you want to make a complete informed decision. Whatever that decision's going to be, you want to make sure you have all the information in front of you. Absolutely. Absolutely, we want to provide that to you. And the next date on there is actually incorrect, and I apologize, that it was not March 20th, it was actually January 31st, because March 20th was this past Monday. So I apologize for that. So we provided Mr. Husband with the information that he was looking for. He wanted to be able to have aerial images that would show, and he specified 21 different intersections, that he wanted to see the additional traffic that would be coming from our development through those intersections. And that was for the weekday morning, the weekday peak hour of generator, the weekday evening, and on a Saturday daily basis. We provided that. He also requested that we show at six specified intersections, turning movements of our trucks, you know, because there's going to be different-sized trucks. So we provided that information. And in comparison, we have four different truck movements. We have a bus, we have, you know, like a FedEx or UPS delivery vehicle, then we have our two trucks. We have the dump truck, and then we have the asphalt tanker truck. Through those intersections on the movements, that we are predicting that trucks are going to be traveling, making those maneuvers. It is my understanding that, that there was, we have not received anything back from Mr. Husband, but the engineering department did issue a letter that contained some more information in there, that kind of piggybacked on what Mr. Husband asked for, from Mr. Mandola. And we need to take a look at that and get back to you on that, because I'm not prepared to be able to talk about that this evening, because I was expecting something from Wayne, but, but I guess it came from Joe, so I apologize for that. So, Linda, if we can go to the next slide, please? So in conclusion, you know, we used ITE trip generation methodologies to be able to estimate the trips, the site trips on, during the peak hours and on a daily basis. Those volumes of traffic do not exceed the city's thresholds, and that methodology, by the way, was approved and accepted by Mr. Husband. We then took a look at the comparison of the city of Nashua, New Hampshire DOT, and ITE methodologies, and because of those thresholds, right, the 75 vehicles per hour during the commuting time periods, the 100-vehicle per hour for the development's peak hour of generator, which is 100 vehicles per hour, which is the same as the guidelines that New Hampshire DOT and ITE has, and on a daily basis, that the, the development, based on those methodologies, the development would not exceed them, and therefore would not be suggesting that there would be an impact from a vehicular increase through those study areas, or even leaving the site, entering or leaving the site. And then going back to, you know, the last bullet where I was talking about the, the truck movements for those four different types of vehicles, those turning movements are showing to be very, very similar to the, to the bus, and to the UPS and FedEx delivery trucks. And they're not really showing any type of additional impact, you know, wider turns or anything like that, or going over into oncoming traffic more than what those existing vehicles are doing that are allowed on the roadways today. So I'm happy to answer any questions, to be able to provide more information, to be able to take a look at Mr. Mandola's comment letter, that I'll be able to provide more information at the April 6th meeting. I'm not prepared to be able to address them tonight, because I honestly don't know what they say.
Okay, thanks. Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This may be a dumb question, but when you did the study, is it just looking at the trucks that are going in and out of there, or is it looking at anything else that could go to this new asphalt plant? Deliveries, employees, any, anything that's, that could be added to that traffic, not just the trucks going in and out of there?
Sure. So based on the ITE trip generation methodologies, what it is, is that it's a database of all different land use codes. And what it is, and it's not just this arbitrary number that's thrown, it's actual counts at driveways of existing facilities, and that put into a database for the different land use codes. So it doesn't separate as far as a delivery vehicle versus a, a truck that may be going there versus a passenger vehicle. Now, there are different generations that show the difference between total trips and truck trips, but it doesn't break down between delivery vehicles or asphalt truck. So, so the driveway counts total are what we use as far as the rates.
Okay.
Thank you. So those would be included within the numbers.
Great.
So a quick question for me. We've heard some testimony tonight already, and before, about the anticipated truck volumes, just the truck volumes in terms of asphalt trucks being in the 200 to 300 per day range. The ITE numbers you're using, are those more or less than that?
They're actually less. So the, the ITE numbers are, it came out to be 250, right around there.
Okay, right around, so they're kind of in the middle of the estimate at this point?
It, it, it seems to be a little bit less, but honestly, it's going to be dependent upon a few things, because the information that's within the ITE Trip Generation Manual, on a daily basis, it's for an average weekday. It's not for a peak weekday. So, you know, you heard Mr. DeFalese say that it could be up to.
Yeah.
Well, that's more of a peak rather than the average.
Other questions? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Plord, good evening. Was there any consideration of having a design, of having a designated truck route? I guess more specifically, if you're going to Hudson, to me, that seems fairly direct. But if you want to get to, say, the Everett Turnpike northbound, or Everett Turnpike southbound, there's a number of different ways you could meander, and you've obviously got residential neighborhoods in some portions. I didn't know if there had been any consideration by the applicant to designating specified truck routes, or alternatively, if there had been discussion with city staff as to whether or not they had preferred truck routes, or if there were any other prohibitions based on vehicular weight. Sort of a loaded question, but I, I think you kind of know where I'm going with that.
Right. So what we tried to do, Bob, is we tried to look at what the most direct routes were without going through residential neighborhoods. And the reason why I say that is because truck drivers don't want to be driving through residential neighborhoods, you know, especially where you have on-street parking, because then the roadway, the effective roadway width is narrowed. You don't want to be driving along roadways where there's going to be different types of activity. You want to be able to use the main roads. And so on the graphics that we showed, they were using the major routes, you know, to be able to get from point A to point B. Now, all of that being said, it's really going to be all dependent upon where the project site is, right, and where the, the trucks are coming from. So when they're coming to the facility, we know the destination point. When we, you know, and then when they're leaving, we know the, the origin, but we don't know where they're going to, where the project sites are going to be. So to say that, you know, we want to restrict cars from going on a residential road where they're actually delivering the asphalt to a residential road, might be a little tricky to be able to prevent them from using that, that route if they're trying to be destined there.
No, and, and I appreciate that point. As someone that's had to rebuild a driveway, I, I, I understand that, yes, that is a possibility. But I, I guess I was sort of more implying, big, big picture.
Yeah.
If, I'll put this out as a suggestion, if perhaps that's something that, that should be addressed, perhaps with staff, having, you know, designated truck routes. But the, the other general question that I had, I appreciate the turning templates that, that your office included in its submittal. I, I guess my, my only other question was, the city of Nashua, as far as I know, will continue its outdoor dining with barricades on Main Street. I guess the area I'd be most concerned about is the section between, say, Canal and, Canal of the north and Eldridge, perhaps, to the south, where you have constriction of, of lanes. And I, just anecdotally, I think there's been some commentary from fire department in the past and other emergency vehicles about the tightness of those spaces. And that was where I, I think that is going to occur during the warmer months, where the site is at a higher level of activity, that maybe having those designated truck routes might be, there might be a greater impetus to speculate on what the best way in and out of the facility may be. I guess that's more of a comment necessarily than a question, but I, I at least wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, we're, we're open to be able to work with city staff to be able to find out if there are certain routes that they want us to, to use and have our, our truck drivers use. That's, that's not a problem.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Plord. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Allerman Tebow?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to go back to, so, the traffic study. So about 250 is what you're saying on average. He was saying 200 to 300 trips based on just trucks, though. So if you're not, in that, that scenario, if you're not putting cars, employees, other drop-offs, all that kind of stuff into that, that's going to be even more traffic. So aren't we saying the study is now low?
No, so, this is just for the asphalt plant, not the existing vehicles that are going to Newport Construction, right? So we want to kind of separate those two out.
Okay.
As far as the employee deliveries, or the employees coming to the site, there's going to be a handful of them, right? As far as anything that's going for, for like UPS or FedEx deliveries, they're really going to the Newport Construction facility that's out there today, so that's not part of this asphalt portion. You know, the asphalt plant, or the facility itself is not going to be getting FedEx deliveries. They will get the deliveries, you know, for...
Must need supplies.
Exactly, exactly. So, and, and those would be accounted for within the traffic, or within the database from ITE for the driveway counts.
So nothing from Amazon?
I'm sorry?
Nothing from Amazon?
No. I'm good, thank you. I can't guarantee that. Well, at least not to the asphalt facility, but to Newport.
Can you, can you just go into a little more detail about the studies that you did at the intersections? I mean, were they, what was the nature of that study at each of those intersections that the city traffic engineer? And did those studies have any, did they account for the pre-approved, you know, the other developments that have been approved, they haven't been built yet, but they've been approved, so?
So, going back to stage one, as far as the city's thresholds, you know, and we didn't meet them for the full-blown traffic study for traffic counts at all different intersections and everything that, to find out what the impacts would be. As part of a regular traffic study, we would do existing conditions, and then grow those to peak month conditions, and then apply a pandemic adjustment factor, then grow them out to a future design condition, include all different types of background developments that may be under review by the planning board, or have already been approved but not constructed, to set the future no-build condition, that we add our site trips on top of that. That's a typical tre, full traffic study. That was not required of us. And, and where I'm saying that is, even though we didn't hit the, the minimum thresholds, Mr. Husband didn't request that of us, or require us to do a full-blown traffic study. He asked for specific information that we've been able to provide him.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand what you did at these 21 intersections.
Okay, so at the 21 intersections, what he wanted to know was, he wanted to know our distribution patterns, like where, where vehicles would be going to and from. And because it's unpredictable as far as where each project would be, what we did was we took those volumes and said, all right, a certain percent are going to be going to the east, and a certain percent are going to be going to the west. And we use the major roadway systems to be able to, you know, either go through Hudson or go to Everett Turnpike. And, you know, those are on the graphics for those 21 intersections. And it's not just the arrows showing the directional routes, but it's also the volume of traffic based on what was provided previously in, in different requests that Mr. Husband handmade.
Okay. And so those volumes were used to do what?
Um, just...
I mean, we're often used to seeing, like, okay, this volume change...
Yeah.
Means that intersection's going from a B to a C, or a D.
Right, right. So that wasn't, that wasn't required or requested of us, you know, as far as like, because what you would have to do is you would actually have to do traffic counts at each one of those intersections, and then do an intersection analysis to find out the delays, and then the, the levels of service, and the queuing, and the volume-to-capacity ratios, and all these other measures of effectiveness, just to find out how the intersection is operating today, how would it operate with the, in the future without the development, and how it would operate in the future with the development.
Yeah.
So back when I was talking about, you know, putting together a full traffic study in the existing conditions, no build and build, that was not required of us because it's such a low generator. I say low generator because it doesn't meet the city's thresholds of when a development may have a noticeable impact. And it doesn't meet the ITE or New Hampshire DOT thresholds either, during the peak hours or on a daily basis.
Yeah, I kind of get that, but, you know, I'm sure you're aware, and, you know, the board is certainly aware, the intersections around that area, there are several traffic studies going on, and then the proposed improvements, all kinds of things. So is it your understanding that the data that you provided for the city is really just additional input data to that effort?
Yeah.
Or could be used in that effort?
Yeah, because what, what ends up happening is when you have a certain volume of traffic that you're sending, and you're dispersing throughout, you know, the local roadway network, the volume of traffic that we're talking about is generally reflective of, you know, the traffic volumes that could change on a different day of the week, the different week of, you know, of the month, the different month of the year. It, it, it's a part of that daily and weekly and monthly fluctuation. So as far as the volume that we're talking about, it's not having an impact at any of the intersections. Now, not saying that, that there are existing intersections that are, or are not deficient. That was not asked of us to look at. But it was really, how, you know, show us some diagrams that are going to depict the distribution of your site trips on the roadway system at these 21 intersections, and that's exactly what we did.
Okay, thanks.
I want to, I want to do, say one other thing, though, is that, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
One of the other questions that was asked of us was about the vehicle camera detections.
Right.
So Mr. Husband had asked us to, to evaluate that, and that was part of our response as well. And so he asked us to take a look at the existing traffic signals along East Hollis Street, Canal Street, and Bridge Street. And so we provided some documentation of those intersections. So I'm not sure how familiar everybody is with, like, GridSmart technology. I know, Mr. Ballinger, you probably are.
We've, we've obviously had several applications. I've talked about it, so...
So what it is, is it's, it's pretty much a camera that is able to be accessed from, you know, from your desk, and you can see what's going on. So what we did was we found out which intersections had that GridSmart technology and which ones did not. There's also a different module, it's a Performance Plus Module. And what that is, is that the GridSmart camera is able to store different kinds of data, traffic volumes, how many people are running the red light, how many people are arriving at different time periods at the loop detectors, things like that, queuing, all, all different variables. But you can't unlock that information from GridSmart unless you have the Performance Plus Module. And so we also documented that, which one, which traffic signal controllers have GridSmart, and which ones also have that Performance Plus Module, and that is documented within that letter to Mr. Husband.
Okay. And there, is there any proposed off-site improvements, which, like, to any of these as part of the project currently, or?
So I don't want to speak on behalf of the applicant, but I know that he's certainly willing to work with the city on, you know, making sure that, you know, whether it's a financial contribution, or whatever it is, to be able to help move those projects along to upgrade the systems.
All right, thanks. Anybody else have any questions from the board for the traffic engineer? Okay, all right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pearlman?
Mr. Chairman, to answer your very last question, the applicant in, in our materials, and I'll call it out to you when I go through some of my submittals, has put $100,000 on the table for the city. We're not going to tell you where you need GridSmart cameras, we'll leave it to Wayne and Dan's discretion, but there's $100,000 toward the GridSmart technology, and we haven't heard anything back from that, but we have said that to staff and to Mr. Husband.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I am hopeful that Zoom will bring Gregory Tachi to you. I know there's a limit on the number of people who can join the Zoom, I hope he's on.
He is.
He is?
Yes.
Okay, I hope he can hear us and he can speak. Kavanaugh Tachi did a sound study for the project, so hopefully...
Okay.
I'm trying to see if I can see...
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Yep.
Good members of the board, thank you very much for inviting me to speak this evening. We did a study of sound produced by activities at the proposed asphalt plant, Drummix Asphalt Plant, on behalf of Newport. And the... And the place that we first started is to see, well, what are the applicable regulations? And the applicable regulations are basically subjective. The Section 19019 of the City of Nashua zoning district and supplement use regulations states all noises, vibrations, emissions of smoke, dust, or gases shall be controlled so as not to be detrimental or cause a nuisance to nearby residential or commercial areas in conformance with the industrial performance standards of this chapter. The chapter doesn't spell out levels that are specific and measurable for engineering purposes. And so we, and this is very common, probably more common than having specific limits, is to, for us to interpret, well, what exactly constitutes a nuisance? When would people complain about sound as being a nuisance? And this is a, we've had a lot of experience with this with projects all over the country. And many years ago, in the 1970s, the, there was a lot of research done by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and other agencies on, well, what, when do people complain about sound? And usually that's related to not how loud the sound is at a receptor location, but how it compares with sound that existed as an ambient sound level prior to the activity or prior to the new facility. And so the, a given sound that might be acceptable in the city would be unacceptable in a suburban location, for example. Just as an example. And so the perception of sound as being a nuisance really is related to how much that sound exceeds existing sound levels. And what we found is that existing sound levels are best characterized as the typical lowest sound level that occurs during the day. And that the intrusive sound levels, the new sound levels by a facility should try to be within no more than 10 decibels of that average lowest that occurs during operating hours. Operating hours here being from 6:00 AM to 3:30 PM, Monday through Saturday. Well, in order to establish what the background sound level is, we monitored sound levels at three locations on, at the site edge of the site property. One aligned the West property line, one aligned the Southeast property line, and on the North property line. Now, let me give you those streets. The South property line be aligned the existing rail line, the Boston Main Railroad. The second location on the North property line was along, sort of towards Temple Street. And then towards Commercial Street is the third location. So we basically established what the background sound level is, the ambient sound level of those three locations, and assigned receptor locations in the neighborhoods beyond the background sound levels measured or the ambient sound levels measured at those three locations. So we ended up with three design goals for facility sound. And these range from 41 to 40, 49. 41 being at, on the, along Commercial Street. And 49 being along, along Temple Street. So that gave us a baseline which will allow us to establish a design goal for facility sound. Again, those ambient sound levels range from 41 to 49 decibels. And what we recommended is that sound levels produced by the asphalt plant in full operation not exceed those limits, 41 to 49, by more than 10 dB, so that the design goal is 51 to 59. Now, to give you some perspective, in these locations, sound levels at, at those measurement locations ranged up to about 70 dB with passing vehicles and averaged about 50 to 60 dB during operating hours. So that we're looking at design goals that are below the average sound levels that are currently occurring now. For that reason, we believe that the design goals are reasonable in terms of protecting against creating a noise nuisance. We used sound power data that was provided to us by manufacturers, sound power levels that we measured ourselves in the field on other projects, similar projects. We've been involved with several asphalt plants like this. And so we have a fairly significant database to draw from in order to estimate what sound levels are at nearest receptor locations. Now, the way sound levels were predicted was to use the baseline sound levels that are available from projects that we visited and made measurements and for projects where data's been provided to us. We have used that baseline sound data in a computer model called CADNA. CADNA is a computer model that uses the relationships that are established by ISO and ISO Standard 9613. This is a modeling technique, a sound propagation loss technique that allows baseline, allows reference sound levels from equipment to be estimated at receptor locations anywhere is from, you know, 10 or 20 feet away to hundreds of feet away. So it's a very comprehensive model that actually provides a worst case in the sense that it assumes that the wind is always blowing from the source towards the receptor, even though theoretically that's, that's a hypothetical case. It's, wind is always blowing in one direction or another, but not in every direction at the same time. But it gives a worst-case estimate. Now, when we built the computer model and estimated sound levels from various sources, and the major sources are the mixed material storage system, which is the, what, three tanks that store product that get dumped into trucks located beneath baghouses, motor and fan. Baghouse is used to filter gases out of the building, used to load trucks. The burner on the drum, the Aztec drum, sound from the Aztec drum rotating itself with aggregate inside the drum. It rolls against it. It sounds more or less like sand or gravel rolling against the drum. And then broadband backup alarms from material handling equipment located in, that service bins and bring material to the drum for mixing with the asphalt. The advantage of this, of this site is that if trucks flow through, there's no reason for trucks to reverse. Trucks flow into the yard from Temple Street and would exit through Commercial Street. The advantage being that there would not be backup alarms triggered with the number of trucks that would be passing through the site. The only place that backup alarms would occur are in the, in the materials handling area where forklifts, where friend and loaders are used to load material into the bins and load material into the asphalt drum. That material, those, backup alarms are, could be a source of community annoyance because they're generally tonal. But there are backup alarms available now that are broadband that are much more innocuous and still serve the purpose of protecting workers in the local area behind moving vehicles. So that's, that's a widely-used technique for reducing tonal alarms that are common in trucking areas. The, there are two additional controls that we had recommended. One of them is a silencer on the baghouse stack exhaust. This is very common application for silencing. Most baghouses anywhere near residential areas are outfitted with a, with a sil- Excuse me, with a silencer of the type that would be recommended here. We also have three, some barriers on site. We have a barrier 20 foot in length and extending two foot above the top of the burners at the end of the mix, asphalt batch mix drum. That burner is a, basically it's a fan that draws air into the combustion process. That fan is, runs at a fairly high static pressure and so it tends to make noise, but it's easily controlled with screening. The barrier, by the way, should be absorptive, the absorptive face facing the burner itself. And we provided some information on barrier systems that could be used as purpose. Some of the structures in the facility used to store materials act as barriers themselves as well as buildings surrounding the project, partly screening some of the residences surrounding, at more distant locations surrounding the project. Our determination is that the receptors have been broken up into three groups. And receptors along the, yeah, I'm going to have to reference. I did not prepare slides here. Slides, residences along Commercial Street basically have the most stringent limit. And the sound levels that, that, the design goal at Commercial Street is 56 dB. And sound levels there with the facility fully operating would range between 56 and 59 dB. Along Temple, along the south side of the site, the design goal that we're recommending is 51 dB. And sound levels there range from 47 to 44, I'm sorry, from 50 to 41. So it's a very, we're finding that sound levels there will be below our design goals for facility sound with the facility in full operation. And at, along Temple Street, where the background is highest, sound levels will range from 54 to 42 within our recommended design goals. So our conclusion is that with the implementation of controls and the design of the facility as it is, that we expect that there will not be a noise nuisance. And that sound levels are going to be generally below what is already are the existing sound levels in those locations. Do I have any questions?
Just a couple of questions I have. Can you just give a couple of examples of, you know, you've used a bunch of DBA levels and some of us are familiar with them and some are not. You know, typical sounds that the layperson might be aware of that are in the, say, 45 to 50 dB range? And, you know, those that are in the 50 to 60, that kind of thing.
Okay. It's always hard to do that because they tend to take it out of context. So one person might look up, for example, then air diffusers in the room and say, boy, how does it make any noise at all? I hear it, but it doesn't make much noise. Another person say, I can't live with that. So there are some contextual issues. I think the best way to, excuse me, I'm recovering from a cold. The best way to really view this and why we view nuisances this way is by comparing it to existing conditions. But in any event, a concert hall is 20 dB, very, very quiet. A soft whisper is about below 30. Interior inside a quiet residence, the sound levels might range from 35 to 40. An average office background, open plan seating, for example, would be about 50 to 55. Normal conversation at five to 10 feet is about 60 dB. And that's above all of the expected sound levels at receptor locations that we've analyzed. An air compressor at 100 feet, now we're getting into noisy equipment that's 70 dB. And a bulldozer at 100 feet is about 80 dB and so forth. So I don't know if that gives you the perspective to some extent to say, well, gee, this is an old office, 50 dB, but this is not an office, we're outdoors. It does make, it does make it a little bit difficult to, to adjust the context. But I think if, if we look at the charts in our report, unfortunately I don't have the report in display here, the charts in the report of recorded sound levels average above the estimated sound levels produced by the facility in full operation. So I think it would be viewed that the facility from time to time would be audible. Much of the time would not be audible. But because the ambient, the sound level is going up and down as a car approaches, sound levels increase. As a car leaves, so to speak, as you're standing by the curb, sound levels drop down. So sound levels in the ambient are always going up and down. But for the most part, on average, they're going to be above facility sound levels at most locations. I hope I've answered your question.
Yeah, that's helpful. I appreciate that. For the board, any questions for the acoustics engineer? Okay. Mr. Brolin?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I had a prepared follow-up comments, but just in the interest of time and to stay on your schedule, perhaps I hold those, so folks in the audience, they can have their two hours and we can come back to this. I was, I had a submittal dated February 3rd that had a lot of the information that you heard tonight is in that submittal in addition to some property value submittals that you received, which perhaps we can address next time. We submitted two items with respect to property values that was submitted this week from Minko Corporation and Keller Williams. The city supplied you with the BBG appraisal. We think it's a flawed analysis. But again, in the interest of time, I'm going to, I'm going to stop and let you continue with the hearing, then I can come back to the rest of my materials, maybe tonight, maybe next time.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that. I think what I'll do, then, understanding that, I'm going to bring it up with the board. Alderman Tebow, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments I want to make before we start the
That's fine.
public hearing.
Sure, go ahead.
And, you know, they're both something Mr. Brolin, Attorney Brolin has said. One of the things he said earlier was, you know, we're appointed by the mayor. I'm not up here. I wasn't appointed by the mayor, just so you know. And I think setting it up that, you know, the mayor sent in his appraisal is setting it up to think that we're going to vote that way just because he's the mayor or just because, you know, some of them might have been appointed by the planning board. And, you know, my, my votes are with integrity and so I just want to make sure that that's clear. I voted for things for clients, for Mr. Brolin, that I didn't necessarily agree with. But because it's the rule of law or it's the right thing to do, that's how I voted. So I just want to make it clear that I didn't want that set up for later. The last comment I want to make is something he wrote in an email where he said he was objection, he had had an objection to people from other wards making comments and sending in emails. And I think it doesn't matter if it's a Ward 7 thing. Nashua is one community. People work in Ward 7, people drive through Ward 7, people that live en masse work in Ward 7. So I don't think, you know, whether you live near this piece of property or not really matters, whether you're for or against it. I think they should be able to speak. And so I just wanted to make sure I objected to his objection of that because I think it's important that if somebody wants to speak on this, they should be able- it's important that if somebody wants to speak on this, they should be able to, no matter what they feel.
Okay, I'm, does anybody from the board wanna recess at this point? All right, so I'm, it's nine-ten. I'm gonna recess for five minutes to nine-fifteen. I'd ask if anybody from the public is going in and out to be seated by nine-fifteen, 'cause it's just gonna delay if you're not, so, you know, in everybody's interest. So I'm gonna go ahead and recess now. Thanks. I said I need everybody to sit down and I'll start again once I can hear. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call back to order this, this meeting again for the City Planning Board, the twenty-third of March, twenty-twenty-three. So we're gonna start public comment, it's nine-fifteen. As I mentioned before, I'll leave this open till eleven-fifteen. At that point, we're gonna shut down. As most of you are aware, this is gonna keep going to other meetings, so. So I'm gonna go ahead and start with those in the audience that hear personally that wishing to speak in opposition or concerned, have a question. I'm gonna ask, obviously, there's a lot of people here. I would ask people keep their comments for like three to five minutes or so, understanding you're using up your neighbor's time if you go any further. And other than that, I do want to start with anybody who's received in a butter notice. Is there anybody here that has a butter notices or is in the, you know, a butter circle? You can, I would like those folks to speak first, so.
So I'm actually an elected representative of Ward Seven and all of those butters, I don't know if I can go?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, I'll start.
Yeah, you have these flowers.
Yeah, you'll have to pick up the microphone in a second.
Okay, sorry, I was just asking him, as a representative, elected representative of Ward Seven, including those butters, if I could go, if there's no-
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, or if you're an older person.
Have to hold the mic.
You gotta hold it, 'cause it's, we won't be able to hear it.
Okay. I might not have the coordination this time of day, so.
Good.
Thank you for your time and consideration. My name is Alicia Gregg. I live at four Eastbrook Drive in Nashua. I'm a resident of Ward Seven, but I'm also an elected representative of this ward. So this is, of course, where the project is proposed. Since the zoning was initiated, the neighborhood has changed. Our city has changed as reflected in the overlay or master plan. And how we do industry has changed, especially this type of industry, specifically with our knowledge of how close proximity of this kind of industry can be damaging to the health and safety of those in the close surrounding areas. According to Mr. De Felice, it would be approximately thirty, thirty-seven trucks an hour for eight hours. One thing that I do know a lot about, because my husband and I have worked closely with the firefighter cancer support network, is specifically how dangerous diesel is. That's one of the reasons that they have exhaust facilities in their fire stations, because of the diesel fumes. When we are talking about this many trucks, we cannot just say, well, you know, I didn't think about air quality from these diesel trucks. If you go down there right now to Bob's Pizza, which is one of the best pizzas, by the way, and you're standing in there, you will undoubtedly see traffic backed up there. So to say that diesel trucks won't be idling and everything else is a problem, that's about as technical as I'm gonna get, because there's a lot of other people that have these specific specialties. My specialty in this area is the people. I have talked to hundreds of them, I have knocked on every door down there, I have had, you know, conversations with them, I've had coffees with them, we've talked. And, you know, something, they were very thorough with their pictures and what they showed, but there was something really missing that bothered me. I'm not down there very often, but I don't see kids walking. That is a walking school district. As the crow flies, that plant is thirteen-hundred feet from where that school is. There are kids walking through there all the time. There are people walking, some of these houses, if they're lucky, have one car running. So they're walking, they're walking everywhere. There, you know, there were people, some of my constituents that I talked to, one woman in particular, I, I would say, do you know this asphalt plant is coming? I think there was notices sent out to probably the landlords and everything, what I understand, the residents didn't know. And this one poor woman, I almost hated to be the one that actually told her and said, do you know, because I, A, I think they have the right to know, but she, she broke down crying. And she was worried, not necessarily as much about the asphalt plant, she was worried about the trucks and the exhaust from those trucks, because she's emphysema, she said, I can't afford to move. These people can't afford to move. I'm sure Mr. De Felice, you know, can, can move wherever he wants, and maybe that's a concept some of us don't understand, but some of these people are barely existing where they are right now. They have been marginalized, and when we talk about putting this kind of industry next to them, we have to talk about that we are marginalizing our community that deserves much, much better. So I hope that that takes into consideration. And our overlay shows that we are moving not from a time of industry when our family actually was doing this in the early nineteen hundreds, that we are, you know, Blooming is the city where we have this new performing arts center, we have all these other things. So I just hope that that's taken into consideration, because these people deserve much, much better. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Come on up, make sure you state your name and address for the record. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Tim Senet. I reside at sixty-two Underhill Street in Nashua. For those of you who don't know Underhill Street, that's in Ward Seven, that's in Crown Hill, that is, as the crow flies, less than half a mile from this proposed site, almost immediately adjacent to the neighborhood elementary school. A little bit about myself, I'm a Ward Seven moderator. I serve on the city's downtown improvement committee. I serve on the board of directors of the Great American Downtown. I consider myself a public servant, and I illustrate that not to boast my own profile, but to emphasize my investment in this neighborhood, this city, and this community. But I'm here tonight in my most important and most pressing role, excuse me, and that's as a father. A major concern of mine is student safety for students coming and going to and from the Dr. Crisp Elementary School, which is in existing use in this neighborhood. Dr. Crisp is a neighborhood school, as the previous speaker emphasized, it serves a densely populated neighborhood and offers no bus student, no bus service to its student population. All the students assigned to attend Dr. Crisp's school live within that half-mile radius. Nashua School District determines that that is close enough for them to find their own paths to school. The parents that are able, as emphasized by the previous speaker, that do have the vehicle available, can drive their students to school, but the students that don't are left to walk. My, my son's best friend was in a, is in a butter of this site and every day walked down Temple Street, across Hollis Street, and up Arlington Street to get to school. In the immediate area of this site, there are fourteen streets that could house either future students or potential students for Dr. Crisp Elementary. This does not account for trickle-out traffic that's going to be created as a result of this development, as most corridors to the highway will pass through routes that are neighborhoods that serve Dr. Crisp and the Elm Street Middle School, which is still in use for at least another year. And those are the routes to school. None of the students in Crown Hill that attend Elm Street are bused to that school either. They are walking these same routes, they are crossing roads such as Ald's and Harbor, which are going to be utilized by the trucks coming and going. The proposal cites two-hundred to three-hundred trips a day, traversing the neighborhood daily during the hours that intersect arrival and dismissal times for these schools. On another subject additionally, zoning overlay and city master plan has primed this immediate neighborhood for aggressive community development. It hasn't happened yet, but it's coming. We are looking at this site for housing, for retail, for rail, and for recreation. Developments at the Henry Hanger site across the street from Temple Street, by the Temple Street Diner, and the expansion of the Heritage Rail Trail will be potentially affected due to the stark contrast of the characteristics of this neighborhood between them and an asphalt production plan. The neighborhood is old. The zoning is industrial. These zoning laws are younger than some of the homes that are there. Many of the homes in the immediate area that were not focused on as abutting streets predate the nineteen hundreds. The zoning is outdated and inconsistent with the evolving character of this neighborhood. Their entire blocks have developed areas that are still joned, G I, that have been entirely developed as residential zones. We need to pause on this plan, not to evict existing commerce, nobody wants to see Newport evicted from the neighborhood. We want good commercial neighborhood, neighbors within Crown Hill. But we need to ensure that future development is consistent with the characteristic of this neighborhood in twenty-twenty-three and beyond twenty-twenty-three. Just as a final note, I grew up in Nashua for most of my life. I've lived here nearly thirty years. In my childhood, I lived about three miles from the Anheuser-Busch plant up in north Nashua. I lived there for about ten years. Over the summer, I drive by the asphalt production plant that many people don't know is located in Amherst, New Hampshire, just beyond Frederick's Pa- Pastries. That's about a block off of Amherst Street, or one oh one A. Every day I drive by that around seven, seven-thirty a.m. after dropping my song off at summer camp. I drive by my window shut, because I'm a guy that likes comfort, and my air conditioning on. That's two blocks off Amherst Street, maybe one and a half, you can smell it from Amherst Street. So the production does smell. I lived three miles from the Anheuser-Busch plant, every single morning you could smell that. Fortunately, I like the smell of brewing beer. I don't so much care for the smell of productive asphalt. These smells travel. I, I think it's willful, I think it's willfully dishonest to suggest that they won't, that these neighborhoods that are around this proposed site would not be subject to these smells. We focused a lot tonight on the immediate areas, Temple Street, Commercial Street. What we didn't focus on is that just on the other side of the stone wall on Commercial Street is an entirely residential neighborhood. Streets like Howard Street, Scripture Street, everything behind the church that has been developed is housing, those are all homes. Some of them are owner-occupied, some of them are not, but that's a neighborhood, and we've paid no focus to them tonight. Those are the most immediate butters that I'm concerned of. And finally, I'll close by saying that if truck drivers do not want to traverse the residential roads, this isn't the place for this plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Come on up, state your name and address for record, please.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is State Representative Maria Perez. I used to be a resident here in Nashua. I'm here speaking for the community who's more affected with this project. And I'm gonna do it a little bit in Spanish, because I want them to know that I'm here to speak and for them. Yo estoy acá representando la comunidad que está siendo más afectada por este proyecto. La comunidad que ni siquiera fue informada en su propio lenguaje que este proyecto estaba pasando. La razón porque lo estoy haciendo en español también es para que entiendan que las personas que están siendo afectadas también se sienten incómodas de no entender la información que se está dando hoy día. The reason that I'm doing it in Spanish is because I want you to understand that the people who's most getting affected by this project, the information is not getting in a simple English language or the language, the language that they speak. You guys speaking in the language that people, many of the people that are getting affected by this project don't understand. Simple English language, and this information is not getting through them. The information about how the people who's getting affected in the area, what they live, is not even passed to them. What I asking is, the people who is in charge of this project, make a simple language for this project that people who's getting affected can understand. And if you guys really care about the people who's getting affected in the community, have translators.
If you were, if you were in mind, could you address the board?
Yeah, have translators here. Because the people most affected in this community, when I heard about the project, because I always reach out, because I'm one of them, a Latina state representative in the state, people didn't even know, didn't even understand what was happening in the neighborhood. What I'm asking is- understand what was happening in the neighborhood. What I’m asking is, reach out to these people who’s getting affected, bring them the information in their own kind of language. And when they come in to testify, or when someone, or the person who’s putting the project together, have someone who can translate the in- the information so people can understand exactly what is happening in the neighborhood and how they’re gonna get affected. But this is not the way that the information should be sent to them. They don’t understand what’s happening. And what is happening tonight is people live because they have little, little kids, and they can stay late waiting until they get a chance to speak. That’s all I’m asking for. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Bob Simons, and I work for SMC Management, and we developed the residences at Riverfront Landing and sold that. And we are currently building the residences at Riverfront Landing Phase 2, which is just due north of this site by a couple blocks. An attorney pro man had expressed concern about not getting a fair shake from the city, but from what I’ve seen, it seems like staff is trying every which way to work within their rules and give them a fair shake, but get information. So when I hear the traffic engineer talking about what I would characterize as loopholes in what the city requirements are for traffic counts at intersections, I think it, it misses the big discussion, right? There is no way in or out of this site on streets that are not already overburdened by traffic. You can’t leave this site and go to Hudson, go to the highway, go to downtown without fighting traffic. And, you know, I get the impression that the, the rules required him to have a certain number of traffic counts from the I T E, but the developer has already stated that he’s anticipating from his sales that he’s gonna double that traffic study. So if he’s willingly telling the board that he’s intending to do twice as much traffic as the theoretical values are, maybe the board should consider putting constraints on the development. If their traffic study says they’re only gonna do a certain number of vehicles, limit them to that. Put a traffic counter in the driveway. Don’t have more than that number allowed out of the site. You gotta shut down the site until you get down below the numbers. One of the other areas was the discussion of pollution, right? They modeled the universe, took the worst five years, the worst days, the worst wind, worst conditions, and they’re never gonna exceed those. Well, we do work all the time and monitor environmental conditions, so perhaps a commitment that they’re gonna put environmental monitoring up, and if they exceed the limits that they represent that they’re not going to exceed, they have to shut down. Sound. Sound’s a great topic, right? No one said anything about jake brakes, but when a dump truck wants to slow down to get into a driveway, they hit a jake brake and makes a pretty significant noise. So if they’re committing that they’re never gonna exceed 51 to 59 decibels, put some monitors out, make the commitment. If their equipment dumping stone into these bins, or their backup alarms that are mandated to be a certain decibels by OSHA, if they exceed 70 decibels, shut them down and make a commitment that they will not exceed the limits that they promised you they don’t anticipate exceeding. And then, we’re a little selfish. We have seen a report that indicates that allowing this development to go through will cost our development eight to $10 million in reduced values down the road because of what having this asphalt plant in this neighborhood will do to the property values around it. So, thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thanks. Uh, anybody else? Come on up.
Hopefully you can hear me. Yeah.
We can, yeah.
Good evening, members of the Nashua Planning Board. I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you about the proposed asphalt plant that we’re hearing about tonight. My name is Suzanne Vale, and I’m of Nashua. I reside at 28 Norton Street. I’m also a New Hampshire State Representative, um, and I’m representing the people of Ward 3 to the New Hampshire House. And as ranking members, uh, ranking member of the Resources, Recreation, and Development Committee, I’m also the Health Chair Committee for the Greater Nashua Area NAACP. And I’m a second-generation clean water activist, as my family has advocated to clean up the Nashua River since the Clean Water Act in 1972. So I’m here today to ask you to just proceed with caution and carefully review what our citizens have to say. Their concerns about the proposed asphalt plant near the Nashua River is a concern that I very much share. The proposed plant could produce harmful, harmful toxins that we heard about earlier that could seep into groundwater and travel to the river and contaminate the water, in fact, threatening the health of our community and of all the communities around us in a silent way that groundwater tends to do that. On the Resources Committee on which I res- I serve, we are studying the importance of the hydrological factors and potability of clean water, and how water runs off and how groundwater near the plant and how fast it travels will make a difference in whether or not it should be sited where the developer would like to put it. I’m also deeply concerned at the lack of argument in favor of protecting the environment. Why I hear, I hear of some filtration and some devices that would be useful. I’m very leery. I take it as a bad sign when it’s on, put forth in a defensive way that we’re not gonna like the project. Well, we would like the project to be brought to us with all of the concerns right up front, and we wouldn’t be thinking that we should have to ask about how we’re gonna protect the environment. We would want you to be able to say that right up front. It is my hope that all that get to decide consider our expertise on the Nashua River going forward. You’ll be hearing from people who understand that the company that brings toxins into the city, that they should make sure that they can bond a fund comparable to a superfund cleanup fund. And I know that sounds very extreme, but it’s important to consider what the environmental impact of a project like this is before it comes to Nashua and not afterwards once it is already here. I will tell you as someone who has been a steward for the environment and for clean water in New Hampshire and who’s worked in New Hampshire government to try to make that happen, whether or not it’s PFAS or a new company coming, whether it’s a gas station that wants to be right next to a lake, we really need to look at what we’re doing right, right now in terms of pollution control. And the issue right here is not bringing toxins into the areas where people live. And to remember to protect the Nashua River, that the people who live near it and the people who would like to near, live near it will always wanna have it there, and they will always want it to be protected for the community that we have, the water that we need, and the water that is needed in all the communities that use the river once it passes through Nashua. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time, and as this unfolds, I’ll be keeping a close eye, and I would absolutely welcome any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Raymond Guarino, and I live at 59 Elgin Street, uh, and that’s Ward 7 in Nashua. Um, and I appreciate that VHB was here and Mr. Plod. They, they, they filled in a lot of missing information about traffic, but I still have a lot of concerns. Um, one of the things that you have to keep in mind is that, um, we have, what you’re going to be doing is putting 21st century trucks on streets that were laid out in the 19th century. Um, and I appreciate that there was analysis on the turning radii, uh, the templates. Um, and from what I heard, I believe that trucks will be able to navigate. My, my concern is that the back of the truck wheels or the trucks are gonna end up on the sidewalk or, or, or hurting pedestrians or bicyclists. Um, templates, those turning movement, uh, templates do not account for human error. And, um, so that’s, that’s something to keep important in mind. I, I know on Temple Street, there’s, uh, there’s one spot if you’re walking along the south side where the building is really up close to the walk, to the, to the travelway. I’d hate to be a pedestrian there. The only thing I could say is walk it yourselves to, to really get a feel of it. And I’m disappointed that we didn’t have a full-blown traffic study. I know, I know they met all the requirements. I understand that, and they were helpful in coming back, but, um, there was no crash analysis. It’s very important. We don’t know what the crash experience is on those intersections. We have the volumes. It’s okay, you know, we know what, what the delays are, and we’re okay for vehicles going through there, but what about bicycles and pedestrians? We don’t know what their experience is going through those very same intersections. And, and I think that’s a disappointment. Trip generation was from, uh, which was also done by the standards, but the standards really don’t cut the mustard. Um, they use land use code 140 for manufacturing. That includes any, any raw materials that are brought in, uh, and, and manufactured and brought out as a, as a finished product. So it could be traffic counts from a asphalt plant, but it could be manufacturing something else. To really do the job well, we should’ve got traffic counts from specifically an asphalt plant, and, and then you would’ve found out how, how many trucks and vehicles going in and out during the day. It would’ve been more, more confidence in their trip generation. Last, I wanna say that, uh, no one has talked about environmental justice. This is an environmental justice issue. No one part of the city should have to bear the burdens, um, of negative burdens of, of industrial development. It’s a, it’s a public safety issue and a public health issue, especially with pedestrians. And that’s, in pedestrian deaths in places like this in urban areas are going up in the United States. That’s what the statistics are telling us. That’s the trends. So, uh, thank you for the time, and thank you for hearing me out.
All right, uh, good evening. Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Amy Manzelli
here from BCM Environmental and Land Law, and I am here representing the Riverfront Landing LLC community right on the Nashua River, just, just off this map here. So, um, we have the project here. We have the nice residential community that the applicant did not address in his presentation. We have the Henry Hanger Building here, and my client’s property would be about right here, right near the river. Before I get started, I do just wanna make a process request. Um, it’s obvious that a lot of members of the public were not able to stay till the late hour. I do a lot of these hearings. I know they go into the late hour often. Um, but I’d like to make a request on the record that when the meeting gets continued, that at 7 o’clock, the meeting begin with public comments, that those that are not able to stay. So that those that are not able to stay into the late hours also have a chance to share their views. Um, I think with the several meetings, the applicant has had more than three hours of presentation time, so I think it’s a reasonable request, and I just wanted to set that out there. Um, I also wanted to start with an apology. I am one of those guilty parties that put in a late letter. Um, I sent a very long letter yesterday. I do have a copy for the board tonight. Um, and I just wanted to explain a little bit of what’s behind that. The applicant, uh, as many applicants do, I don’t wanna single out this applicant, you know, keeps providing updated information, updated information, and it’s hard for folks like me who want to make sure that my legal analysis that I’m providing reflects the most up-to-date plan. I don’t wanna give you legal analysis on, you know, the two plans ago plan. So I apologize that it’s last minute. Okay, let me launch into my real remarks here. It does matter if this use is a permitted use or not. That definitely matters. But you still have to satisfy each and every single requirement of the subdivision and site plan regulations for this use to be lawful. And that’s your job to make sure that this project meets all of those legal requirements. It’s not DES’s job. D- I work with DES a lot, and they are not gonna care about the character of Nashua. That is outside of their jurisdiction. It would actually be unlawful for them to think about that. They are also not gonna care about Nashua’s property values. These are things that is the function of planning. It’s your job to do. Essentially, these regulations are in place to make sure that each site is the right site for each project, and this site is the wrong site for this project. So I have a long letter that I’m gonna hand out to you. Um, it goes over 10 specific points why this application is not approvable. I’m going to highlight just three of those points for brevity tonight. The first point, the application is not consistent with Imagine Nashua. The law of Nashua requires that all applications be consistent with the city’s master plan, and this project does not do that. I wanna put some statistics to the environmental justice issue. So in this neighborhood that we’re talking about here, the neighborhood where people live, which the applicant is not talking a whole lot about, and in your appraisal report, your appraiser also identifies several residential areas surrounding this proposed use. Here are the characteristics of the people that live there. People with limited English proficiency is five times higher than the New Hampshire average, and you have heard your constituents testifying about that tonight. People of color, 4.6 times the state average. People of low income, 2.6 times the state average. Unemployment is 2 and 1/4 times the state average. People with less than a high school education, more than 2 and 1/2 times the state average. And all those little kids that we heard about walking to school, there are more than two times the amount of people under the age 5 in this neighborhood. So that is the data behind this environmental justice concern. And that is part of what makes this project inconsistent with all of the equity and inclusion principles in Imagine Nashua. Another thing is, and I think this is part of why the applicant is not paying so much attention to these residential areas, this, the, your laws do not say this project has to be in, has to be consistent with the abutting properties. It says surrounding and nearby. That’s a much bigger circle than just abutting. So by law, you have to think about all of these people, and whether this proposed use is consistent with the master plan, and only if it is, is this application approvable. All right. Second point, this project is not compatible with the existing character of the neighborhood in many ways, but the two that I wanna talk about are the loss of tens or hundreds of millions of dollars of property values. My client stands- My client stands to lose over $3 million of property value. And I, and we had a study done that shows that, and you had a study done that came up with the same exact result. That is really strong evidence. Now, when you add in the Henry Hanger Building, when those 88 units are ready in November, because they’re under construction, that’s not a vacant abandoned lot. They’re being built right now. They’re slated to be offered in November. That’s, that value is gonna be about $30 million, and at the 10% property decrease your expert is estimating, that’s another $3 million hit. And then when you apply the property tax rate, that’s a $120,000 loss of city revenue. And that’s just two properties. So when you add that impact for all of the properties, that’s where you start to- So when you add that impact for all of the properties, that's where you start to see that this project is projected to make a hit of a decrease of tens or hundreds of millions of dollars to Nashua property values. The other way this doesn't fit with the character is because of pollution. Now, in my materials I'll give you tonight, we hired Dr. John Durant, who is also a professional engineer, and Dr. Neelakshi Hooda from EMP Consulting. They do environmental monitoring, just like Dr. Green talked about, and they have a lot of concerns about this project. So let me talk about, um, what they say about how this project will worsen air quality. And I want to read their words instead of summarizing it, so I'm getting it right. So they started out with some important statistics about this area current day. Current day. Diesel particulate matter, right now, in this area is 2 and 1/4 times higher than state average. Air toxic cancer risk is almost 1 and 1/2 times higher than state risk. The traffic proximity and volume is already more than 3 and 1/2 times higher than state average in this community. And lastly, the entire Temple Street community is at the highest possible level, 95% to 100% for asthma rates. So that's what exists today. And then what happens when you add in this project? And I'm going to read directly from their report here. And they talk about diesel being a concern, but one of the earlier, um, public comments addressed that, so I'm not going to repeat, but I'll commend you to my letter. Bag houses are designed to remove particles in the sub-micron or several hundred microns in diameter, and not gases or vapors. So in my words, the bag house won't remove gases or vapors. And they require a special coating to remove ultrafine particles that are in the nanometer range. Therefore, it is likely that substantial amounts of gases that reach the bag house will be released untreated from the plant. Asphalt plants are significant source of emissions of volatile and semi-volatile organic compounds to ambient air. Once released, these compounds undergo photochemical transformation, giving rise to secondary organic aerosols, which can condense to form particles of different sizes, including ultrafine particles and PM 2.5, both of which are toxic. Health effects of ultrafine particles are well-characterized in the literature. These particles can penetrate indoors, into these homes, and typical ventilation systems are not an effective removal strategy. And just their conclusion, in summary, the proposed plant, if permitted, will exacerbate harmful air pollution exposures for the population in the vicinity and increase existing environmental And I wanted to say one more thing about the air pollution. With respect to Dr. Green's testimony earlier, it, I think it's true. I am not a hot mix asphalt, hot mix asphalt plant expert, but I think it's true the technology has changed. But one thing I do know a lot about is air pollution, and what we know about air pollution has changed significantly. And you will note that the doctors we have hired cite scientific material as recent as 2022. They are not relying exclusively on 20-year-old data as the applicant's materials are. All right, last point. I wanted to tell you briefly about what happened in Portsmouth, in case you didn't know. In Portsmouth, there is an existing asphalt facility. It's owned by Pike, owned and operated by Pike, it's been there forever. A developer came in and at the adjacent property proposed a new multifamily residential community, a large one, you know, hundreds some odd units. Uh, that was approved. That was appealed. And on appeal, the Portsmouth Health Officer issued a letter saying that asphalt plants are so dangerous for public health that the zoning board should absolutely reverse the approval. And that's what the zoning board did. The city of Portsmouth has decided that asphalt plants are so dangerous that it disallowed a new residential community to be built next to an existing asphalt plant. So different set of facts than what we have here, but the same principle. These are not compatible uses. And I've got that, um, health letter and the Seacoast Online article in the package for you. So in conclusion, your record, especially with these materials I have for you tonight, it contains sufficient credible materials to deny this application. And on behalf of everybody that's here tonight, but especially my client, Riverfront LLC, I respectfully request, then it comes time to vote on this application, you vote to deny the asphalt plant. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and appreciate all the time that you have spent tonight and many hours before in terms of the multiple reports. Hey, my name is Bob Keating. I'm from Five Coleman Woods, and I'm a member of the Granite State Organizing Project, which is a community-based organization that's been here for 20 years. As an organization, we have spent many hours, uh, meeting with residents, uh, educating about what we know and learning from the residents themselves about, uh, what their concerns are and, uh, what, uh, their hopes and wishes are. And I think the turnout tonight, I suspect that there will be predominantly people speaking in opposition to this. And that's actually a, an uncommon position that many of the people who are here tonight, that we often speak, uh, at various, uh, city bodies, uh, and alderman bodies about, preventing, uh, not in our backyard NIMBY, uh, projects, because we want to expand the basin which, where people can, uh, live. And in this case, it's a, a different position, um, in that, uh, position of myself personally and shared by the organization is that, uh, this is a particular use in this area that I don't think is warranted, uh, and it's, is in fact, I think there are very few people that you will find, other than those who have economic benefits from it, that would say this is a good place to, uh, to place this. And this is no aspersions about the, the company itself. Clearly, we need asphalt plants. We have one in our, in our city. So that's, that's not the, you know, that's not the, the point here. So wider, an opposition, well, we've had, the speaker just before was, was just so powerful in terms of both the, the facts and the, and the organization, uh, to demonstrate , uh, multiple reasons, but, you know, just to note them, uh, health, uh, that's been reported on here, safety, uh, for, uh, for children, for anybody, pedestrians, uh, traffic. Uh, there's remark from the, the applicant about, um, well, actually, the traffic study to say negligible, that to have 250 is when it started and the applicant itself actually set up to 500, it's not negligible. It, it just is not by subjective experience, uh, if you will. So for, uh, the safety for, uh, anybody, for, uh, to the, uh, the quality of, of life. And I don't think that, uh, it's a strong applicant that anybody would say, geez, I, my desire is I'd like to locate my, my residence next to an asphalt plant. Uh, we've just heard the, the remarks from Portsmouth, uh, what, how they responded to their particular thing. So it's just not, you know, not a place that people would say, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about Henry Hanger, which has been somewhat delayed in terms of the development. I can't imagine that they're going to advertise that, uh, their, uh, potential neighbor is going to be the, uh, the asphalt plant. Next is in terms of the, um, and this has been said several times, so just in noting that, um, and I think the, the name of the, the way in which we came to the, uh, the input from our community to develop the master plan was Imagine Nashua. This area is not imagined this way. It is not imagined this way. We're talking about hundreds of new housing there for the purposes both of supplying more and more people with houses, this is a very desired community to live in, Nashua were very fortunate in that way, um, but that it's idea that it will be an economic generator. There has not been any arguments from the applicant that this project, this asphalt plant, will be an economic generator in comparison to, um, housing, uh, more restaurants, uh, more activities, uh, in that area. I was struck this morning that I got in my mailbox a, a copy of the Manchester Union Leader's article from, uh, March 3rd, uh, which had a big picture of next, next week's grand, uh, opening of the, the art center. Think about what that would be for the art center coming on right there, uh, you know, instead of an asphalt plant. And I suspect we're not going to feature that, or the union leader is not going to feature that as a boon to, uh, to our community. So, so those are some of the, you know, some of the factors, and I, I think about in relationship to that, you imagine we're, we're the gate city, that as you come into our community, we have an asphalt plant as a welcome. It's just not the way, uh, the master plan, it's not the intention of the, of the overlay district, uh, it, it just is not. We had a different vision, uh, to help with the economic development of our city. Finally, finally, I, I can say enough about a number of the speakers who have spoken about, uh, economic, uh, justice here. Uh, I suspect that there will be a drop in values, uh, from, uh, from this. It's, it's hard to imagine that that's going to, uh, increase. We, we've heard about the disparity already in this community in terms of racial and language. So we're speaking about economic justice, we're speaking about environmental justice, and we're speaking about racial justice. Uh, so I, I would ask the, uh, the board to, uh, deeply consider that, uh, all the expert opinions that have been given and, uh, and the heart felt and deeply thought-out concerns that they have about, this is not the right place for an asphalt plant, and it's not generally my, my position to stand up and say, I don't want to have something here, but I, I think that we can support, uh, this neighborhood who has come out en masse repeatedly to say, we don't want this here. Um, and so that's it. So thank you very much.
Come on up.
Yes, good evening. It's not morning yet, so this is good. Um, I, I fully came here tonight intending only to listen and not to speak, because the people that live in the neighborhood, I, they have said it well, so have others with a lot more expertise than me. However, I listened, or I tried to listen very carefully when the trucks were talked about, the different sizes of trucks that are expected to be there, the trips, the daily traffic and whatever. My name is Sue Newman. I live in Ward 2, and I've been a state rep, serving on the Public Works and the Highways Committee for now over six years up in Concord. And what I have taken away from my time on Public Works, which I continue to listen to, is the wear and tear on roads that the weight of vehicles cause. This is a huge issue. So in all of the, all of the times, in all of the discussion this evening that I heard about trucks, volume, different sizes and so forth, I didn't hear, nor am I looking for right now, the weight of your largest truck empty, the weight of the largest truck that would be full. And where I'm going with this is the number of trips per day and the routes that they take will affect our roadways, and this would affect our city roadways, which makes somebody have to do repairs, and that's a budget item at some point. So in all the other things you listen to, I hope you'll take the weight of the vehicles that are, that could be expected to be here into consideration. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Taylor Berry, and I live at 33 Wellman Ave. I'm a 17-year-old student at Nashua High School North. And as a young person, I'm deeply concerned about the future of our planet, especially in terms of climate change. For this reason, I'm frustrated that the city of Nashua is even considering putting an asphalt plant downtown. On average, asphalt plants release around 10,000 pounds of emissions a year. These are 10,000 pounds too many if we want to reduce global warming by 1.5 degrees Celsius from pre-industrial times. In addition to negative environmental effects, the proposed asphalt plant will have negative health effects. Asphalt plants release hazardous chemicals, including carcinogens. Trucks heading to the asphalt plant will kick up dust and release greenhouse gases as well. This is particularly alarming, considering that the asphalt plant would be located in a residential neighborhood. In the past several years, Nashua has made great strides in terms of promoting sustainability and livability in the city. Municipal buildings have become more energy, uh, energy efficient. Buses are more eco-friendly, and we have joined the Community Power Coalition. If we want to continue this sustainability, we must vote down the proposal to put an asphalt plant downtown. Not only will this protect the health of our environment, but the health of our citizens. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you for listening to me this evening. I'm Mike Appleburg with the United Way of Greater Nashua up on Broad Street. So I come to you tonight, like so many of our neighbors, expressing concerns over the potential construction of the asphalt plant in the downtown area near Temple Street. Our concerns are primarily based on the fact that this area, as you have heard, while it is designated for mixed use, has become an increasingly residential area. Within just a few hundred yards of the proposed site, there are many fellow Nashuans, our neighbors, who are, who are our neighbors and for whom we, as a city, are responsible. I feel it is important to emphasize the words "many" neighbors and "close by" when describing the people who live near this plant or would live near, near this plant. As a community and you, as a community and you as a board are responsible for their health and their well-being and should be, using that as your criteria for deciding whether or not to allow the siding for this plant. The applicant has shared with us their opinions that the plant will be safe and quiet, and we appreciate their efforts to attempt to minimize the impact of the project. However, at the end of the day, I would ask you to consider whether you would want to live and raise your family, or with your elderly parents, live within earshot of a manufacturing facility such as this. It can be virtually guaranteed that no matter what assurances are made by the applicant, the plant will be louder, smellier, and more detrimental to the neighborhood than would be the neighborhood without the plant. Come on. It is also not guaranteed that it will even be as minimally impactful as the applicant has claimed. Alternatively, or additionally of concern, the trucks, as you have heard, and the traffic will contribute to the noise and the air pollution in the area, and there is absolutely nothing which the applicant can do about that, except of course, to find a more suitable location. We ask that you, as a planning board, step back for just a brief moment and forget about zoning regulations and rules, although there are questions about that too with the overlay district, and consider simply the health of our community and what is in the best interests of all Nashuans, including the very mixed neighborhood down on Temple Street. I should emphasize, we are not anti-business, anti-growth. I should emphasize, we are not anti-business, anti-growth, or even anti-asphalt. In fact, we all need a healthy economy, as well as roads and sidewalks, to have good lives. Nevertheless, this proposal in this location is simply a patently bad idea, and one we encourage you not to allow to proceed. Thank you for listening.
It has been a long night, and I can see that you all are feeling about like I'm feeling right now. So, thank you for your time and your generosity and hearing all of us. My name is Kristi Basada. I reside at 12 Nutmeg Drive in Nashua, and I come here as a citizen, a housing advocate in this community, and also a member of the clergy representing Main Street United Methodist Church, whose parking lot comes off of Temple Street, and also thinking about our sister congregation Arlington Street United Methodist Church, which is just a very short distance from the school, but across the street. Our zoning and land use codes reflect our carefully constructed and shared values as a community, and it's my understanding, after some research and conversations, that the decision you make regarding this proposal, and any proposal in the Transit Oriented Development District, hinge on the developer suitability report, as required by our code. While we have plenty of expert testimony tonight that speaks to property values, it really doesn't take an expert to understand that this proposal is unsuitable for this site. The suitability criteria, as far as I can tell, are designed to prevent harm specifically to abutters and neighbors in the surrounding neighborhood, and we've heard all about that. I don't want to repeat myself. It's the hazard of creating your statement ahead of time, isn't it? But I also know, or at least understand, that this body must not consider the proposal as things are today, but as things are approved. And it is my understanding that you all have already approved over two hundred seventy units of housing abutting, whether they are built or not, and that those are to be considered as built when considering this proposal, whether they are built or not. I would urge you to do so. We've heard a lot about hypothetical modeling this evening, which has been very interesting to me, because in my first career, I was an engineer in manufacturing in the chemical industry. I know a lot about modeling, and I also know that modeling isn't perfect. It's often good, it's always hypothetical. We're talking tonight about real people, as you've heard, striving families who live in this neighborhood and will undoubtedly, despite the rainbows and unicorn scenarios we have heard tonight, be adversely affected by the noise and the smells and the traffic and the exhaust as early as 6:00 AM, when I believe our city noise ordinance is seven, and the danger, frankly, of having a hot, flammable petroleum binding agent mixed with aggregate and dust so close to their homes. This project will reduce the quality of life for the people who live in, worship in, and that includes at least five Spanish-speaking churches in the immediate vicinity, walk in, bike in, and go to school in this neighborhood. Let's give these folks, who are clearly at a disadvantage in our community, a chance to rise with their neighborhood, treating it as if it were our own neighborhoods. Which brings me back to shared values. The city's land use code and our master plan are built around the idea that we can and must live well together, treating our citizens equitably and with respect, regardless of socioeconomic background. No one here tonight is proposing that Newport Construction should cease to operate as they have been doing. We are simply asserting that the proposed plant is in unsuitable use on this site. Thank you so much for your time.
I hope you can hear me well. Good evening, lady and gentlemen of the planning board. My name is Andrea Osorio. I am a high school student at Nashua High School North. I am eighteen years old, and I live in Eight Jackson Street, Ward Three, right on the cusp of Ward Seven. I'm here to discuss with you the negative effects that the Newport asphalt plant would bring. To begin, I would like to help you in assimilating one of the greatest dilemmas that the proposition would introduce, which of course would be toxic emissions. A study conducted by Brice University in 2020 used a computerized program to simulate the spread of air pollutants caused by a hot-mixed asphalt plant, Newport specialty, and a, quote, "distance of no less than three point six kilometers is to be maintained between the factory site and neighboring residential areas," and, quote, "three point six kilometers." However, here in Nashua, New Hampshire, we're talking yards. Less than a thousand yards away from 145 Temple Street is the Southern New Hampshire Medical Center. Less than seven hundred fifty yards away from 145 Temple Street is the Dr. Norman W. Crisp Elementary School. Less than three hundred fifty yards away from 145 Temple Street is Jackson Street, my very own home. And, of course, less than sixty yards away is the Nashua High School North, the bus stop for the children in the area. I used to take this bus, and it would average around thirty-five to forty kids to and from school every single day. That would be thirty-five to forty children, each with their own families and guardians that would live directly next to this plant, and that's only high school, because remember, seven hundred yards away is the Dr. Crisp Elementary School, not to mention the countless numbers of residents without children in the area. Of course, these distances away from 145 Temple Street seem quite short, since they follow a linear path to and from each location, but as you all know, wind doesn't follow street signs. Polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, also known as PAH, is an organic compound that we, as nearby residents, would have to coexist with, and occurs naturally when burning coal. Asphalt is made up of eighty percent carbon and requires high heating of the aggregates to form the pavement, consequently forming these PAHs, among other emissions. A quote from the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, or OSHA, states, "Human studies have reported lung, stomach, and skin cancers following chronic exposure to asphalt fumes. Increased risks were also noted for lung, stomach, bladder cancers, and leukemia." This included the, this, of course, includes the carcinogenicity of PAHs. And, of course, you can dissent all you want, but you won't succeed in eliminating the toxins, such as these, in complete accuracy, because deodorizing does not equal eliminating. Nearby residential, educational, and commercial buildings would be affected on a daily basis, increasing the health risks of hundreds, if not thousands, of Nashuans every single day, and a majority of these being children. However, emissions aren't the only problem. As you've already heard, thirty percent of the population in the proposed area is of Hispanic origin and descent, including myself. I am Colombian. This isn't a rich neighborhood, and the placement of an asphalt plant here would further decrease the property values of the surrounding apartments. The industrial-esque environments make surrounding neighborhoods already unattractive. Meanwhile, an asphalt plant is being debated, instead of the enhancement of this area of the city. I would just like to know, I guarantee that there would be a much bigger uproar if the proposition was made in a wealthier part of town, but we have a voice too. As I've come to find out, Nashua, New Hampshire, is the second safest city and the fourth best-run city in the United States. Let's keep it that way and say no to the asphalt plant. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Warren Chen. I live at sixteen Tanglewood Drive, Nashua, and I'm a senior at Bishop Gerton High School. Like most of the other concerned citizens today, I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed asphalt plant development. And I think one of the things, right, is that there seems to be a debate regarding the physiological impacts that the proposed asphalt plant would have on people. But something that isn't up for debate, something that is unequivocally true, is that when given the choice, people will rather not live near an asphalt plant than live near one. And I think that's a very important point to note. Property devaluation, as mentioned by many other people prior to me, myself, is a very pressing concern for people within the surrounding community of this proposed development. Ms. Osorio, who is a dear friend of mine, I was actually just talking to her, this community has been facing blow after blow after blow economically, right? First the COVID pandemic, then the economic qualms that we started last summer and are still feeling now. And this asphalt plant would be adding fuel to a fire, which unfortunately threatens many people who aren't as financially secure as other people within the same exact city. So, just an example, right, Ms. Osorio, I was just talking to her, her property price, right, the rent, raised sharply, twenty percent over one month, right? So, clearly, the livelihoods of people are at stake here, and as you guys move to the vote, I would strongly, I would strongly condone you guys to consider the livelihoods that are at stake here. I also have on me a document that I found on the Nashville City Hall website. It is the response to Samborn Head and Associates memorandum, and I just had a concern regarding one of the statements in here as well, specifically in regards to the odor complaint handling, right? Seems like the applicant does not offer a specific, a specific indefinite stance on whether they would actually include a odor management hotline as a provision. Now, only if this deodorizer works at a hundred percent effectiveness, will there be no chance that there is no complaint of odors, right? Otherwise, there might be a chance of odors, and therefore, that odor hotline would be the most effective, and therefore, the most important line of communication between the community and Newport Construction Company. So, in addition to that, also ambient air monitoring, if the applicant would like to clarify at a later time, I do not understand how the monitoring at Westford, right, which shows that it is operating at regulation, I do not understand how that essentially provides justification for not having the same monitoring here at the Nashua plant. Ultimately, this brings us to the question of, do we really want to sacrifice, or at least, at the very least endanger, the livelihoods of hundreds, if not thousands, of people in the communities surrounding this place? So, members of the committee, I once again implore you, right, I advise you that once you move to this vote, to vote against the development of this asphalt plant, so that we are not moving forwards, as a planning board, as a city, for the sake of the profit of one company, but for the sake of the revitalization and empowerment of the communities that need it the most in this city. Thank you.
I'm Dante Castellano, a high school junior at Nashua High School South, and a member of the 350 New Hampshire Youth Team, as well as president of Planet Earth Club at Nashua South. I strongly oppose the proposed asphalt plant. I would not support the future goals of the city, and it certainly wouldn't help make the city a better place to live. Additionally, the proposed space for the asphalt plant is very close to the heart of downtown Nashua. As a concerned student, environmentalist, who plans on living here for quite some time, the addition of an asphalt plant certainly wouldn't be something that would keep me here. Nashua should be a model for other communities in New Hampshire, not a city to look down on. The environmental harm that could come from this plant is not an amount that should be impacting the city in the future. Although existing public health guidelines have been met, I'm not sure why future guidelines have not been seriously considered. Guidelines are going to need to change soon, if we do want to be able to combat climate change. I believe that approving the building of this plant would be a huge step backwards for the city, and I really hope that you all vote to not open this plant, so, thank you.
My name is Joshua Billings. I live at 29 Jury Lane in Nashua. I'd like to start with mainly rhetorical question, but if someone on the board would like to answer it, I would appreciate that. You know, it's late today on a Thursday night. What is the purpose of you guys being here? Like, what do you think the purpose of this board is, if not to deny this application? A bit of a leading question, but curious. Is it just to follow some rules, or?
We typically don't go back and forth with the public during the hearings, so.
Okay, then we'll take it as a rhetorical question. In my mind, I see the planning board as, you know, you want to make sure that projects, they serve the public interest, that it's not just in the economic benefit of one party and deteriorating from the whole city. I think we have a pretty nice city here, honestly. I've lived a lot of places, four different states, ended up settling down here and buying some property. I used to live at Riverfront Landing, so familiar with the neighborhood. And, I mean, we have a really nice downtown here. We have something that's pretty rare across the country, walkable downtown, that isn't completely infested with cars and large trucks. And I think a lot of people fail to see that. Clearly, the applicant fails to see that. They just took some pictures of some graffiti and made it look like kind of a wasteland. But I think from that train depot, where they took that graffiti picture that I'm thinking of, if you turn around, there's dense housing right behind there on the other side of that roundabout. Everybody's mentioned that already, but, you know, any Realtor can take a picture and make something look, a bad location look good, or I guess the lawyer can do the opposite. So, I wanted to expand on Rep. Newman's point, that the fourth power rule, so, we've talked a lot about traffic, everybody has, but the wear and tear on the roads is proportional to the fourth power of the vehicle weight. So, I mean, this is the, like, five hundred trucks a day is equivalent to thousands of passenger cars. Like, we're going to be spending so much money on road maintenance. This property, like, this project is going to cost the city so much money. What economic benefit are we getting out of this? Like, why would we approve this? I genuinely don't know why we're here. Like, you haven't heard anyone in the neighborhood, anyone in the city, who's supported it. It's just the people who have an economic incentive. And so, I hope that you serve the public and not one company. And, yeah, I think that's all I got.
All right, thank you.
My name is Peter Schaefer. I live at fifteen E Street. It's about a half a mile from this facility. I'm here to defend the master plan and the city vision for the future. I was on the master plan committee, as I know the planning board was also represented by two people as well. So, I know you know what's in the master plan and what's, what we think the future ought to be. This area is zoned general industrial, and why is that? Okay? During the Industrial Revolution, you know, there were lots of factories built here, a lot of industry built here. Okay, we have the, you know, the downtown, the huge buildings that are now apartment The owners of the factories that lived, that owned the factories down here, and the bosses for these factories, they lived on the north end, because they owned horses, okay? The workers didn't have horses. They went to work from here. That's why you have so much workforce housing in this area. So, you see a lot of old workforce housing in this area that we're talking about, and you see the industrial area, okay? And that's why it was, you know, zoned industrial, okay? It was a miserable place to live. Like I say, the rich folks lived up north, across the river. Like I said, the rich folks lived up north, across the river. As soon as cars were available, okay, the workers headed away from the city, because it was a terrible place to live, it was very polluted, okay, and they lived elsewhere. Okay? A lot of things have changed since then. We still have zoning that reflects some of this, we certainly have housing that reflects some of this. A lot of the businesses that were here, industrial businesses, have left. There are still a few of them left, okay? And they're trying to make a go of it still, but this is not the trend. Everywhere in this country, people are moving back into the cities, and they're not doing it because there's industry there, okay? It's a digital world now, and it's happening everywhere. It's happening in Nashua. People are moving in. You've got a high-density population here. We are a welcoming city, okay? We want people to come here, okay? We're building the master plan, and the vision of the city for this area is to build a lot of housing here, okay? And let's face it, asphalt plants are not compatible with high-density populations, okay? You've heard a lot about that today. I don't need to get into the science of it. You know, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure that out. So, let me go get my notes out. That's about a, I'm getting older, and my memory won't get me to the last page. You know, one of the things that we've heard today, well, you know, was about all of the pictures we saw about that area, how terrible it looks, and, you know, like, what's the big deal? But that's the whole point. An asphalt plant is not going to make the place look prettier, okay? And we have a much better vision than those, the way they vision this area. So, you know, we now have the Yards Center, which is maybe a half mile from this facility, okay? It's going to open up in a few days, okay? Apartment complexes everywhere, and as you heard, the property values would go down for that. You know, we have outdoor dining, okay? Of course, we have, I'm not going to get into what the trucks and all that, but I think you can make that connection. You've heard enough of that today. I've got a last page here, if I can find it. You know, we talked, you've heard about the commuter rail, and we're told that we may never come. We've worked very hard for this commuter rail, and we're having a heck of a time trying to get commuter rail here, and it may or may not happen. But I'll tell you, we're working very hard to do that, and I suspect that we're going to have commuter rail here, you know, before we have an asphalt plant. And of course, we're building the Heritage Trail east here as well, that goes right past this property, okay? High-density living, this obviously is incompatible with the vision that the city has, okay? And I commend the mayor for defending the master plan and the city's plan. And I think you were there planning as well, and you know what's in that plan, and I think you need to defend it. You know, we are one of the best cities in the country, okay? And we are a welcoming city, okay? How is that going to go down when we put an asphalt plant in here? How are we going to defend, how are we going to defend that image? So I think in the long run, we're going to know where this is going to go. The short is getting, the line's getting shorter, so I'm going to go for it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, hi. My name is Elaine Leesus, and I live at 10 Stanford Road, Ward 3. I didn't come and bring any planned speeches, because I didn't go think that far ahead. So just some random thoughts after listening to the presentations today. I did text my daughter, and with all due respect, doctor, she's a chemist as well, but she does air quality testing. And when I texted her about, you know, do you guys work, test air quality at asphalt plants? She responded back in all caps, "Do not let them build one near you." So that was my first warning. They recently, I guess, did a test in Westerville, Ohio, that the city commissioned, because they were concerned about the air quality from their asphalt plant. So that, you know, leads one to think that there may be more to it than what we've heard. I do find it interesting that the area selected for this plant is a low-income minority community, and that not something in a richer residence area that has more open spaces. You know, there's tons of open spaces on 102, 111, that would get them easily to 93 or 3. Also, it sounds like from Maria when she spoke, that the residents in the area have not been provided material in their language. And I know the ACLU sued a municipality in Florida for that reason, that they didn't provide non-English material or translators. Thought about the traffic, 100 trucks a day adds a lot of pollution to the air, especially when you're sitting half an hour watching the train go by, and you can't move anywhere and you're idling. The roads are already sketchy and overly, you know, traveled. And it's not terribly easy to reach the highways from that location. I mean, obviously, you're going to want to hit, I mean, granted, they probably sell some to Nashua, but they're going to be hitting other locations. I do appreciate all the, what they think they have as fail safes. However, filters, equipment, and processes fail, which could affect the air quality. And they talked about that descent, the fragrance or whatever they use to cover the scent. It doesn't remove the scent, it adds chemicals on top of it. So you've got more garbage in the air than you really need. I know they're called nuisance odors, and nuisance odors may not be considered a negative, but as someone who gets a good whiff of nuisance odors from the Budweiser plant, the Merrimack Water Treatment Facility, or the crematorium in Merrimack, when the wind blows in the right direction, you notice them. Also, I'm sure St. Cobain thought everything was going to be peachy keen when they started their productions, and then years later, we find the PFAS. Or we're still cleaning up, or have just finished cleaning up the Creosote from Coppers, which is two streets away from me. The Tannery took ages to clear up. So, I mean, it's not something that you have to go into lightly. I did feel a little passive-aggressiveness when they said they weren't going anywhere. So I don't know what that means. I mean, if they've got the property, that's fine, but if they're not going anywhere, what are they going to do with it if this does not get approved? And I know it was mentioned that they don't work all year round necessarily, but there's going to be, you know, when they're not in full production, there's going to be product left. What happens with that? I mean, it's going to start decomposing, and then you're going to have petroleum products seeping into the ground. Also, I'm assuming they have to clean out those tanks using some kind of solution or water, and where does that waste go? And how is that going to affect the water system? I mean, we're still trying to clean up the rest of the river. Also, I didn't hear anything that where the asphalt would be shipped to. I mean, if we're affecting property values and the economy and the environment in Nashua, and everything is being shipped to Vermont or Ohio, why? You know, find something closer. And I would like to know what the company is going to be doing to offset the effect on the area, for instance, like a safe green space. Or I know what seems to be popular with a lot of companies now is they offset their carbon footprint, which is just a way to pretend that they're being environmentally conscious. So that's just a lot of thoughts and random thoughts and questions that I had listening tonight. Whether or not they've been answered elsewhere, I don't know, but I just wanted to make sure everybody had that in mind. I also find it interesting that I haven't heard a single person for the plant. I don't know if they figure they don't need to fight it, or if they're not vocal, or if there aren't any. I mean, I don't know if it's better to see if we put it on a ballot come September or November, and see if, what the city thinks. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Justin Monroe. I live at 3 Carmine Road, and I just had a quick comment. It was an observation. When the air specialist was sharing information, she had mentioned that the, if the measurements were too high, then the recommendation would be to lower the output. And I think she mentioned something about 200 trucks a day. I also heard a range was thrown out there of 300 to 500, and it just caught me that if, if there is further discussion about this, it seems like narrowing down on, I like math, some of these measurements would be good, like the size of the truck, the actual number of trucks per day, and whether it's eight and a half months of production and 10%, and the other months, like, let's get a year number. Because a day has a huge, when you multiply it out, that's a big, that's a difference between like 60,000 trucks a year and 150,000 trucks a year. And that's what, it sounds like from the air quality aspect, that makes a difference. And it sounds like from the traffic aspect, that's the number of trucks. So that makes a difference. So if you're, there were a lot of, I learned a ton tonight, there's a lot of great things. You may not need to even look at the numbers anymore. This woman's three things out of 10 were probably enough. She's got seven more, but if you still have to do the math, I would request that you narrow in on an actual number of trucks or amount of quantity or something specific.
Linda, is everybody muted on Zoom?
There are, there's still way three people on Zoom.
Muted on it.
Yeah, they're all muted.
Okay, yeah, just getting feedback. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Michael LaFavor. I am the owner of the Henry Hanger Building. I had a long statement on the first meeting, when it was proposed to be a batch asphalt plant, and now we've seen some significant material changes to that design. My initial thought is that it might be deemed more safe than the, you know, traditional batch asphalt plant. I feel like they're both kind of outdated technology, and they have their, you know, place in this world, we certainly need them. But, you know, I'm not going to repeat the full kind of dossier that I presented you last time, but, you know, with more information being brought forth, valuation destruction on the surrounding area, I think that our property is going to be impacted the most significantly. The proposed site is right here, we are literally directly across the street, or across the abandoned railway. Oddly enough, we are not a direct abutter because of that railroad, but we are in process. It is not a vacant building. We have committed millions and millions of dollars, dove into the city's vision of what Nashua is going to be. We put our money where our mouth was, and we really liked the direction that this, this town was going in. So for us to follow the direction of the city, what the town wants, to see the destruction of the neighborhood, and, you know, I've got nothing against business, I've got nothing against, you know, entrepreneurship, but to almost be jaded for the idea that the city's going to be this, we commit our capital to that, and then something slides in and then actually completely destroys, you know, this great vision that you guys put forth. So the other major concern, too, is that I think everything that's been proposed right now is not something saying that, hey, we have a solution for this. They're simply saying, yes, we are going to be putting out toxic chemicals into the environment, but it's to a certain ratio that it's, it's not hazardous to you. So when I sit across from the table for a resident that wants to rent an apartment, I said, well, you know what? Yes, there's arsenic, and there's cadmium, and there's all of these other chemicals, but here's the thing, it's, it's in a level that's, that's not harmful to you. I don't think anybody is going to want to hear that. I think that our building is going to be fully constructed and rented prior to his installation, if, if approved. We also are going to be facing a mass migration. So once that asphalt plant gets completed, they're going to start smelling those gases that escape from the bags, that the odor doesn't capture. And we're going to have not only a value destruction, but an economic impact for us. We won't be able to pay our debt service, the property would get foreclosed on, because there's obviously a certain occupancy ratio that we need to hit in order for this, this to actually work and, you know, provide housing, which is desperately needed in the community. So if you guys all want to look at my report, that, or the, the statement I made on the last meeting, I encourage you to do so for the sake of time. I will end it on those comments there.
Good evening. Thank you so much for your time. I know it's getting late. I will be brief. My name is Dan Weeks. I live at 7 Shattuck Street, about half a mile to the northwest of the location, in the adjacent French Hill neighborhood. I want to just first appreciate the applicant's due diligence. I know this isn't an easy process to go through, and there's been a lot of public sentiment on the other side. I work for a construction company, I appreciate that. A lot goes into it, and these nights get late, and it can be tough when you invest a lot of time, and the support just isn't there. With that said, this is something personal for me, as it's for many people who've made time tonight. My three kids and my wife and I live, as I said, nearby. We, we love walking and biking through the neighborhood. My kids love watching the freight trains, waiting a few blocks away from this Temple Street location. They stop by Make-It Labs. We dream of the future passenger rail, when I trust it will come back to Nashua. We feel an investment in this neighborhood and in the vision for Nashua that has been spelled out in the Nashua Master Plan, of which you, as the planning board, are the chief representatives. We are encouraged and inspired by the slow but steady progress we are seeing in this neighborhood, with new housing, including affordable housing, finally being added. And notwithstanding the current zoning designation, I think the facts on the ground paint a different and more hopeful picture about what will come to this neighborhood and what is already coming. I was here at the start of tonight's hearing with my three little kids before bringing them home for bedtime, and felt compelled to come on back. They asked why we were here. They're not yet seven and not yet four, the twins and the little guy. And my explanation was pretty simple. We, we stand up for our community and for our environment, and it is something close to home. My wife, who happens to be African-American, was raised near a coal-fired power plant, which is a story that's been told many, many times. She happens to have a respiratory condition like most members of her family. When COVID struck, she was hospitalized, and multiple members of her family died. Chances are, we will be okay. We're blessed to have good jobs and good health insurance, and, and if the worst happens in terms of health effects, well, at least we're half a mile away, and we've got the health care. But I am concerned about, in the immediate proximity, the 6,716 people who live in Census tract 106, and just north, French Hill, the 4,717 people, according to the 2020 census, who also live nearby. What happens if the best-case scenario does not come about, and we see the health consequences? Not to mention the impacts on the future development and vision for this neighborhood and our city. And I'm sure I don't need to remind you, as public servants on the planning board, but for my own benefit, I was reviewing on our city website what the charge of the planning board is. And it states, as you know, that "The planning board shall promote public interest in and understanding of the master plan and of the official map of the city as hereinafter provided. And it shall do all things necessary and incidental to the promotion and execution of said plan and map." That plan is exciting. It's hopeful. It will take us in a new and better direction as a city. It will draw more people to our city. It will keep more of our young people in our community. That's what excites me to be a Nashua resident and to be raising my family here and hoping they will stay here. So as the stewards of that plan, which we as a city have collectively assembled over years, please take us in that hopeful direction. We just don't need this in our neighborhoods.
Hello. My name is Sean Murphy. I live at 2 Proctor Street. That's about 300 yards down the street from the proposed plant. I was just told that there's a big echo back there, so I don't know if there's anything we can do to fix it. And I noticed it myself, so. But anyway, I But anyway, I want to speak about my own personal experience with Newport Construction. They were hired by the city of Nashua to do the Broad Street construction, and they were required to have third-party insurance, Allstate, GEICO, you got it. Well, I damaged my car and I filled out an insurance claim, and I found it odd that I was filmed sending the information to a Newport Construction email address, and then I got a bogus letter back in the mail, a denial claim, because they didn't have the correct insurance. And I asked multiple times via email and phone for the correct insurance to be provided, and they just thumbed their nose up at me. They have no respect for the city of Nashua, the residents, and if they're capable of coming in here and victimizing people and ripping them off, then what aren't they capable of? And I would ask that you give them no consideration whatsoever until they first settle the claims against this. Now here tonight, we have, the first person that got up was this attorney, and he said, we're a construction company and we're going to be there anyway. That's a passive-aggressive threat, and that's not going to work here in the city of Nashua in New Hampshire. Next up, we have the next person, and he was asked a question, and he said, I know in Massachusetts, it's five years. That's not going to work. You're the owner of this company, you need to know if it's three, five, or whatever it is. Next up, we have the traffic engineer who lowballed the number to make it fit. Next up, we had the toxicology person, I could go on for a half an hour about what she said, but she said, I live in Massachusetts and down there, doesn't matter what it's doing down in Massachusetts, it's here. The next person that spoke was the engineer, the engineer said, there's traps over there, and to the best of my knowledge, they work. I mean, what kind of nonsense is that? To the best of your knowledge, and you want to put in a major residential area, you want to put an asphalt production plant? These people are a bunch of bullies and thugs, and I ask that you stand with me tonight to hold them accountable, they have no place in the city of Nashua. They bullied their way around, they ripped off the residents, they're bad people, and there's no doubt in my mind that they would rip us off, and especially after what they said here tonight, they didn't know the answers. They have no intention of playing by the rules, they haven't up until this point. It's absolutely ludicrous in that area of town to put an asphalt production plant. In my opinion, the best thing that ever happened was the River Apartments, because every night there's a stream of Uber Eats and DoorDash going in and out of there. Every Friday and Saturday night, there's a stream of Uber and Lyft hauling people to downtown to eat at restaurants, clubs, bars. And if we were to put in that asphalt production plant, the young, educated, college professionals wouldn't live there, they wouldn't come there, and it would turn the River Apartments into a low-income housing. And we need more of the, to build up that area. And I want to thank you for your time tonight, thank you for your consideration, but make no mistake, they're bullies and thugs, and they weren't prepared tonight, and they have no intention of playing by the rules. Thank you for your time.
I think you can use it, I think it's.
It's been a really bad echo back there, but I think I can talk loud enough to make sure the whole room can hear me.
I think they just.
Can you guys hear me in the back? Awesome.
I think they fixed it already, yeah.
They have fixed it, awesome, because it's a really bad echo in the back.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Hello, my name is Jessica Margison, and I am a tenant organizer with Granite State Organizing Project in our Manchester office, the town I reside in. I appreciate that even though I do not live in Nashua, I am given the right to speak on this topic that is very important to me and, as you see, many other individuals and families that are here tonight. There are many people that I care about that live in Nashua and multiple tenants of your beautiful city. Nashua is growing, it's evolving, and as we see in an April 2022 New Hampshire magazine article, it is a city on the rise. A quote in the article by a family of five that reside in this town, who had recently moved from Pelham to this beautiful city, said, "I like the thought of living in Nashua because of lives, because our lives would be contained in one community, community, the ability to walk around that community and exist and enjoy it and thrive in it," basically. The city also unveiled the Nashua Center for the Arts, a 750-seat theater, keeping up with Nashua's theme of being New Hampshire's most creative community and known for its vast collection of public art, more than any other city in New Hampshire. The city has over 30 sculptures within it, a symphony, the Green Park Art Show, art walk, a community theater, amongst multiple restaurants downtown, and small mom-and-pop ones, mom-and-pop restaurants throughout. When you perform a quick Google search on what it is like to live near an asphalt plant, it is quick to see that it is not healthy, it does smell, people commonly experience side effects, the smell is described as radiating, meaning outspreading in the atmosphere. Article on constructionpros.com, the more you heat it, the more it stinks. If you own an asphalt plant and you have no neighbors around you, nobody's going to care about the smell. And yet, here we are. It is near a neighborhood, it is in a community, it is near downtown, and it is near all these beautiful things that you have created in your beautiful city to attract people, but yet, your main attraction will become something that smells. This company does not have Nashua's best interests at heart, when they chose from the beginning to be in a neighborhood full of people when they know it should not be there. And then, to start this meeting by saying they are here and not going anywhere. You spoke about the news, or you spoke about the mayor originally, or they did, about the mayor originally having a letter in support, but all I can find online is the news saying the mayor strongly opposes it, so I'd like to make sure that is repeatedly on the record and made abundantly clear. And last, I ask that Nashua do what's right and make the third time the charm, and permanently deny, deny this plant and put protections in place to not make the people come back and stay late into the night repeatedly trying to protect their city. Thank you very much.
Hello, thank you for hearing me tonight. My name's Will Darby, I live at 13 Jensen Street. Okay, let's try. My name's Will Darby, I live at 13 Jensen Street, I'm on the Energy and, as applicable here, Environment Committee for Nashua, I'm also, I also happen to be a state rep. I will be brief, because most of the points that I was going to make have already been made, but just to highlight a couple of points. First off, I, I was confused as I researched the zoning of this block, that it was general industry, when right next door, at 131 Temple Street, is a seven-unit apartment building, and right next door at 2 Murray Court is a six-unit apartment building. I also heard that the, the land use code was 177, which permits asphalt plants, but I would point you to land use code 171, which covers chemical manufacturing, refining, or processing, including manufacturing, refining, and processing asphalt. That states that it's conditional use. When you have two conflicting land use codes, I would suggest that the more restrictive, the conditional use applies, which therefore requires a permit by this planning board. Now, being a state rep, I wanted to mention, I, I looked up the RSAs that govern, for example, master plans. RSA 674 states that "The master plan shall be a set of statements and land use and development principles that give legal standing to the implementation of these ordinances." New Hampshire is not a home rule state, and that means that this RSA governs the city's planning authority. As we've heard, there was a, the most recent master plan was approved in September 2021, prior to the application of this, and it includes the East Hollis Visioning Concept. The East Hollis Visioning Concept includes building cohesive, mixed-use, and transit-oriented districts, encouraging the incorporation of green infrastructure, infiltration, tree planting, and pedestrian access routes within parking areas, and encouraging new development to be mixed-use with active ground floor uses. I would, as we've heard, and I would remind the planning board, that Nashua and New Hampshire is 20,000 housing units short, has a 20,000 housing unit deficiency. And so discouraging the, and, and the master plan accurately reflects that, and this, this use, this asphalt plant, would directly contradict the master plan, which ultimately violates state law. Okay, so then, the last thing I'll say is that, just to repeat briefly about how this, how it doesn't align with the, with the, with the ordinances, or that's the word I was looking for, with the ordinances of the city. 119 states that it has, the land surrounding the area shall be sufficient to maintain compatibility with surrounding uses. The, the applicant's own material stated that many of the components are at or, or near or above 100 decibels, 100 decibels is the sound of a subway, while you may be able to muffle those temporarily, those, those mufflers will break down over time and, and directly impact the, you know, the, the surrounding residents. The EPA has explicitly stated that asphalt plants produce pollutants that are hazardous to human health, we've heard what those are, and that in addition to the, the, the homes that are in the, this GI district, so what I guess I should say is that, home apartments are not allowed under the, under the land use code in GI districts, which makes you wonder, hmm, how, how did they get, get allowed in the first place, and how was a new apartment complex authorized? Interestingly enough, I, I researched that, that authorization, and it was, it was stated that it was zoned, zoned general business, when in fact, on the, on the Nashua GIS site, it clearly states that it's GI. Therefore, there's a lot of confusion about how this should actually be zoned, clearly it's because of historical reasons, the fact that there were some, some construction materials zones that are only permitted in GI zones that they wanted to leave in place, they've allowed that to grow up over time, it really shouldn't be zoned GI anymore. If it is zoned GI, then the conditional use, not the permitted use, should apply, which requires a permit, and clearly, the, that permit should not be allowed. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Leclerc, and the rest of the members here. I wasn't planning on speaking today, I was going to plan on speaking at the next one, and I still reserve the right to do that, because there'll be more information that'll be forthcoming, so. But I did want to make this statement that I had written, and I'm going to kind of repeat something that my colleague from the Board of Aldermen had also stated. I'm not really even sure where to begin, but one thing that I want to address is a comment that was made in the correspondence relative to the number of emails and letters against this proposal. First, the author of that comment seemed to feel that only those that abut it or live very close should be allowed to an opinion. I'm sure that's not what was meant by that comment, but it's how it came across, as seen by my colleague from the board. Every taxpayer and business owner and employee in Nashua should be afforded the ability to speak out in favor or against just about any project that has potential to affect them. This particular proposal calls for approximately, based on the report that we saw, 46 trips in and out of the proposed drive-in asphalt. I believe that was like a per hour. When I looked at the traffic report that was provided, I saw that the en route will take you down Amherst Street to Main Street to Lowell Street to Canal Street, with, I believe, some potential for Main to Canal, and then to Bridge Street. This is my ward, and I apologize because I did not say who I was. I am Patricia Cle, I live at 9 Maywood Drive, I am the Ward 3 Alderman, so I apologize for not having started that way. Like I said, this is my ward and affects the residents in Ward 3, as you've heard from many of them here, as well as Ward 2, and then Wards 7. Based on that report given, for some 46 trips, or I should say 46 large diesel trucks, may not seem like a lot, but tell, tell that to those residents that have to live with the additional traffic to already-packed roads. Anybody who drives on Amherst Street, Canal Street, Lowell Street, at any given time of day, you hit traffic. I live down in Maywood Drive, I drive down Manchester Street, Conker Street, just to cross over to Main Street. I avoid Amherst Street because of the current traffic that's there, I can't imagine having that many more vehicles there. The, the out direction will go through even more wards, affecting their travels and even children playing in their yards. So to say that those that abut should be considered only is, in my opinion, a misstatement. Let's take into consideration those that work, shop, and play in the downtown area, along with those routes that I mentioned, they too will be impacted, and they should, too should have a voice. Okay, I'll leave that point alone for now, as I, I hope that I've made my point, that this impacts more than those that live directly next to the proposed asphalt plant, and all voices should be heard and taken seriously. To address the emails and letters once again, I agree that they, many seem to be a form letter that may have been passed through one or two entities, but I think that it's human nature that when you want to speak out but don't know how to find your voice, you look for information, when you find an organization that speaks how you feel, you will stand with them and try to speak in a single voice. But there are many, as I often say, there are many drops that make an ocean. So again, I do not feel you should dismiss any of, dismiss any of these emails or letters just because they came through a form letter. I tell my constituents that you want to voice your opinion, please send me a direct message or make a phone call, but just because they use an organized group doesn't mean that I would dismiss their opinion. All voices equal and relevant, even those that vehemently disagree with me. So now to the, one of the important reasons I, I oppose this proposal. I note that the master's plan speaks to increasing businesses' growth in the city, while it also speaks to increasing housing and green space, as you heard many speak here. I often said that the master plan is an invaluable document and something that every city and town should have, but let's be honest, oftentimes, those three items that I mentioned are going to be in conflict. And this is when the boards, like the planning board, must decide what is priority, a business or resident Nashua. We can live in harmony, but we have to look at when do you bend and when do you stand strong? Nashua is already plagued with sites that need to be cleaned up, like the Beazer property right in Ward 3, the Mohawk Tannery on the border of Ward 3, or the Gilson Road and so many other, so many others. Heck, just about every dry cleaner in this city, or any city, has tainted the ground. For the time it takes to clean up these properties when they are vacated, it costs the city valuable tax dollars, because these places are vacated. That costs, as I said, the valuable tax dollars and gives the community a black eye. We don't need the potential for another such organization to come into our beautiful city and even hint that it will have a negative effect on our citizens, workers and visitors and potential residents. I mentioned that while these properties lay vacant because of the cleanup, I'm sure that many are saying, well, that isn't the case here. But can you guarantee me that after years of this petroleum-laden product being manufactured and put into these diesel vehicles, won't create toxic air, ground, and even affect the two large waterways in close proximity? I'm sure you're thinking, how could we know? But if this is approved, I'm going to ask them, are you willing to sign a document that would allow annual testing, not every five years, if the levels become above the, and if the levels become above the acceptable, albeit low, EPA standards? And then stop production and then immediately proceed with the necessary cleanup? I hope if this project is approved, that becomes a requirement. If you honestly feel this is not an issue, you should have no problem signing such a document. Now, I could go on and on, but as you've seen, smarter minds have already spoken, or will be speaking perhaps next, next meeting. So I'll leave it to them, but I truly hope that my esteemed colleagues here on the board will truly listen to those here in the audience that are speaking against and for this equal balance. These are not people who are afraid of the boogeyman, they are afraid, they are fearful for their city and their families. How can we build an incredible performing arts center, new homes and apartments, as well as condos, and not take into consideration what Director Cummings wrote to you relative to the estimated 10% decrease in valuation to the residential properties in the area? to the estimated 10% decrease in valuation to the residential properties in the area? I think it was BBG who also stated that this would have a negative effect on the city, and that was the city's appraisal. I will add to those potential developers considering to build in that area, and those that have already committed may back out just because of the potential loss in value. I want to add one more very important point, as an Alderman here in the city of Nashua, the residential properties here in Nashua pay the largest percentage of the tax base. I believe, as last stated, the residents pay somewhere around 70-plus percent, with businesses and industries paying the remainder. Having said that, I believe that they should have the most weighted voice of all. Please take that into consideration when you're deliberating and trying to put the facts together. The location has many, many zonings such as general industry as well as a TOD, with homes and businesses trying to live in harmony. It may not be the ideal situation for some, but they have learned to live together. This asphalt plant would truly change that way of life for these residents. I have personally spoken to some of the residents in that area, and close, and close to that area, who are saying they will move. Whether this is an idle threat or a real possibility, it shows how frustrated and upset they are. So please listen with an open mind, and do not ignore their pleas for no asphalt plant. It is wrong for the area, even if there is right to build it. I implore you to vote against this plan. One more comment that I want to make is that, when they talked about the queuing, they said that they could queue up to 14, and then they had an overflow that I think could take maybe five or six, bringing it up to like 20. Those vehicles, as I know diesels, aren't shut off. They're going to be running. There's a potential for 20 cars to somewhat be queued, or diesels to be somewhat queued up. What is happening to that air pollution? They said they didn't do any tailpipe testing. This really bothers me. Can you imagine 20 asphalt diesel trucks, and these residents living, their babies, they can't open up their windows during the summer, because we already said that's going to be the biggest time, and if they don't have air conditioning because they can't afford it, what do they do? So, thank you for listening to me drone on, as I always do, but I think this is important conversation, and will change the direction and the intent of the master plan if approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Is that good for the microphone? Okay, good. My name is Heidi Tramarko. I'm a staff attorney with the Conservation Law Foundation. CLF is a nonprofit environmental advocacy group that works to protect New Hampshire's environment and our communities for all people in New Hampshire. And you've heard from many of those residents here tonight, but I want to make sure that it's clear, all the voices that haven't been heard tonight. When we started the hearing at 7:00, the developer had until about 9:05 to present their petition and their application and answer questions, and there were many residents in the room at that time that have since left. And so specifically, CLF hired translating services to be here for many of those residents, and I believe we had about 30 people who were having the hearing translated into Spanish and Portuguese, and all of those people have since left. So I would like the record to reflect that the community's voices has not been heard fully this evening, and there is a percentage of the population, and a significant group of people, who haven't yet had a chance to voice their feelings about this plant. So I'd like to request that the, that the board does continue the hearing until April. I know there was a representation made at the beginning that that was likely, and I just want to ensure that that does happen, and I know that many people who left were under the assumption that they would be able to come back and speak again in April. So I want to make sure that the board takes, does continue it, and allows people to testify again in April. I do have comments that I'll be providing to the board. And I'd like to hand these.
Yeah, I think you can just give them to them. Yeah, thanks.
Would it be possible for them to look at the maps I have attached to that?
Yeah, you can send the map around if you want. Yeah, you can just throw it around.
Thank you, and I will submit them electronically as well. And I will keep it brief, too. I know this is the very end of a long night, but I wanted to, you know, you've heard a lot of discussion tonight about this community, and I want to be here to support the community, and also to provide some factual support and some legal support for some of the claims you've heard. So attached to our comments, you'll see printouts of some maps that we've gathered with data from, from the state and federal data that's available. And this shows you a little bit of data to support what people have described, how people have described this neighborhood. And you can see that not only are there high quantities of certain communities in this area, but they're concentrated right in the location of the proposed asphalt plant. So the community in the immediate vicinity is predominantly low-income, people of color, and home to households with a high percentage of, a high percentage of households with limited English proficiency. On top of that, as you'll flip to the fourth page, the, the EPA has created a tool, it's called the EJ Screen. And what you can do with the EJ Screen is put in a particular area in the map, and it will generate the data that lets you know the environmental burden that's already on a community. And so this is the burden this community bears right now. And you'll see, looking at this, and the maps show, it kind of zoomed in close to the location of the plant, and then we also showed a zoomed-out map, so you can see that these environmental harms are impacting this community in Nashua, and then as you go out, you can see that it's not impacting the majority of the state. And so there's really an unfair burden that's being borne by this community. Specifically as to air pollution, we looked at it for six different environmental indicators related to air quality, that all have negative impacts on human health. And this block group where the proposed plant is located is in the 95th to 99th percentile for those adverse air pollutant indicators in the state. So those six, where they're in the 95th to 99th percentile for particulate matter, ozone, diesel particulate matter, air-toxic cancer risk, air-toxics respiratory risk, and hazard, and proximity to traffic. So the community is already bearing this large and unfair burden, and you've heard spoken already, this is a real environmental justice concern. And you've heard many people speak about how the plant is not consistent with the master plan, and I've provided in the comments, and you've heard reference to these tonight, that this is not just something for the board to take into consideration. This is a mandatory finding that the board must find. In order to approve this plan, the board has to find that this, these site plans are consistent with the master plan. And I submit to the board that it is not consistent with the master plan. If you look at the master plan released in 2021, it specifically identifies this neighborhood as one of eight areas in Nashua for redevelopment. And you've heard reference to that master plan tonight. It must guide this decision. And notably, I didn't hear the applicant reference the master plan. This is a necessary criteria. The applicant also didn't reference the transit-oriented development overlay zone that must guide decisions for this property. The master plan calls for this area to be walkable and bikeable and pedestrian-friendly. It talks about small-scale buildings with active ground-floor uses. An asphalt plant isn't only inconsistent with that, it contradicts that. The plant and the trucks will be incompatible with people walking and riding their bikes. It, there's no ground-floor active use, there are no mixed use, and it's inconsistent with those requirements of the plan. It's also inconsistent with the transit-oriented development. And you did hear reference to this before, that overlay was based on the 2004 East Hollis Street Area Plan, and that plan forms the TOD, the overlay district, and the overlay district specifically incorporates that East Hollis 2004 plan. That plan I find really compelling, and when you read what it says about this East Hollis District, they, that plan envisions the neighborhood, and specifically Temple Street, as a pedestrian spine between the proposed commuter rail and downtown, and it calls out Temple Street, where this plant is to be located, as the one and only kind of main street that's supposed to be walkable and pedestrian-friendly in that area. And so it's critical that that plan guides this decision to disapprove this plan. The other provision that I want to point out that the board needs, must make a finding on, is the provisions in the, the site plan approval provisions, that the facility must coexist with the surrounding uses, and it cannot have a significant health and safety impacts on the surrounding properties, or on the general population of the city. And as you heard, these are not just the butters. It cannot have a negative, a significant negative safety impact on the surrounding properties and the entire city, which is quite a large area. And we are providing a study from a senior fellow, a senior scientist at CLF, that looked at the air dispersion modeling provided by the applicant, and found it woefully lacking. There are many pollutants that the plant will emit, and that they acknowledge it will admit, but their study only studied two of those, benzene and formaldehyde. They didn't do a health risk assessment, assessment for all of the contaminants, and they didn't do a cancer risk assessment for any contaminants. They also didn't assess any air emissions from any of the trucks, and as you heard, that will be significant. And so that analysis by Dr. Kathryn Walker is attached, and it talks about the significant air pollutants and the health risks that will come from those, and I won't get into them in detail, but they are attached. Dr. Walker also discusses the odors that will be released from the plant, and it's notable that by their own application, they, the applicant proposes this decent deodorizer, but acknowledges that it won't address all of the odor. And so by their own acknowledgement, it doesn't address, it doesn't, it won't control all of the odor. And the study that they provided, which is a study of their own employees, is really lacking, and is not a sufficient study to, to, to show that this deodorizer is going to control. And what we know is that the plant will produce toxic fumes, air pollutants, and noxious odors into the community, and by the ordinance and the site plan approval criteria, it cannot be approved by this board. And so I urge you to both keep this hearing open for the public to speak, I urge you to allow the public to go first, next, when we come back together again, I'm hoping in April, and I urge you to deny the approvals. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, I appreciate everybody's participation tonight, understands a very long meeting, and we're, you know, still in process here, so. We've exceeded slightly. I appreciate everybody attiring to being as quickly as possible, but we've gone over the two-hour limit that I set at the beginning of the meeting, so at this point, I guess I'm looking for the board to talk, make a decision regarding whether it's appropriate to table the motion at this, or the application at this time, you know, table the hearing. We have it scheduled for April 6, so we would table to that date, certain. You know, I think, you know, public comment at that meeting is up to the board, seems pretty reasonable to me, see why we wouldn't do that. But, you know, we would need to make that decision as we open that meeting, but, so, does anybody want to make a motion? We can't really get into discussion until that motion's done, or somebody makes one.
Mr. Ballinger? Certainly, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion to, is it a continuance officially?
Yes.
As opposed to a table?
Yeah, yeah.
I would like to make a motion to continue cases, the following cases, 821-0299, 821-0300, and 821-0301 to the April 6, 2023 Nashua, City of Nashua Planning Board meeting.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger to continue these three applications until the 6th of April meeting. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
I'm just trying to, maybe in my own mind, wrap my head around the framework of what the next meeting will be, and by that I mean, I don't know if the applicant has any new expert testimony to present. Obviously, they'll be given an opportunity to respond to the public comment, but I'm trying to tee this up in a way that obviously they get a chance to respond, but I'm just not sure what the framework.
I'll, I'll put that out to staff, do recommendations on that framework, you know.
Well, I would also put it back to the board. You've heard some testimony this evening.
In terms of expectation of additional experts, I thought we were expecting some anyway on the city side.
Sure, well, I think the request to keep the public hearing open and allow people to speak earlier in the evening is quite reasonable. Yes, we did discuss earlier about the opportunity to have technical professionals, specifically Sanborn Head and Associates and their representatives, speak to some of the air quality issues, and we do plan to have them with us, either in person or remotely, on the 6th, to speak to those, and the applicant may also do something similar. So we do reserve some time during that evening to cover some technical items. We've been keeping notes of some of the technical questions, and we hope to answer those at that time.
And I appreciate that.
Go ahead, Mr. Ball.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only other thing I would add, and I'm not, I'm not trying to restrict, excuse me, restrict anybody's ability to speak for or against or any of that, it's just, we're approaching hour number five of testimony here tonight, and if it's another five hours, I'm wondering if, at least in the back of our mind, we should be thinking about two weeks from, from April 6. I'm just trying to figure out, I don't want to cut anybody short, but when you're approaching the five-hour mark, it's, it's a lot to absorb in, in, in one evening, so I'll, that's, that's a comment, that's not necessarily a question anybody has to answer this evening, but it's, it's, there's, there's a burden, and I don't want it to be on folks that feel that they need to speak on the matter, so.
Okay. Any other discussion by the board? Okay. All those in favor of the continuance?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Okay, we are continuing on those three applications. Thank you. We do have one other piece of business for the board, the review of the tentative agenda under other businesses. Anybody had a chance to take a look at that, want to make a motion? As to whether there's any items on that? If you folks could just hang on for like 30 seconds, you know, it's going to be tough for us to finish this without it. Appreciate it. So anybody had a chance to take a look at that?
I have it, Mr. Chair, and I can't find it.
Yeah. I mean, I've taken a look at it myself, I'll make, I don't mind making that motion, that there aren't any items currently on the tentative agenda for proposals of regional impact. Does anybody want to second that?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes, okay. Any further discussion items by the board? All right, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chair?
We have a motion to adjourn by Mrs. Ballinger. No second needed on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes, we're adjourned at 11:28. Thank you.